Now I'm going to call this public hearing of April nineteenth reconvene from April fourteenth to order. This meeting is convened by electronic means and as such council members may participate in person or by electronic means. For council members participating by electronic means, please ensure your video is turned on and let the clerk know if you leave the meeting for the purposes of confirming quorum. And to meet our bylaws, members must enable a video to their video to confirm quorum. If any council members attending by electronic means lose connection, we'll recess the meeting until the connection is restored and if the same with the voting process. Members, the public can view the proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link, which will be retweeted, sorry tweeted out at at Van City Clerk on Twitter. Of course, as always, we acknowledge we're on the unceded traditional homeland of the Musqueens, Gomis and Slaywith Heath people and thank them for their generosity to all who live or can play on these lands and thanks very much to staff here at the city of Vancouver who work hard every day to make our city an incredible place to live, work and play too. Clerks, we have the roll call, please.
Mayor Stewart in the chair, councillor Carr is on leave of absence, councillor DeGenova.
Present.
Councillor Fry.
Here.
Councillor Swanson.
Here.
Councillor Hardwick.
Present.
Councillor Weeb.
Present.
Councillor Boyle.
Present.
Councillor Dominado.
Present.
And councillor Bly is on leave of absence, councillor Kirby Young. Not here. You have quorum, Mayor Stewart.
Thank you so much. Before I begin, we have some announcements. The public may participate by speaking over the phone, submitting written comments to council or by speaking in person. Speakers have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered and council, I allowed quite a lot of leeway. Last meeting, allowing folks to talk about the Broadway plan, but just on reflection, I am going to tighten things up in this meeting and to just talk about as is proper in these public hearings. The the matter under consideration, which is the single building. Speakers should also state whether they are opposed or support the recommendations and if they are residents of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter so they don't miss their turn. And you can follow, you can send any comments and writing to Vancouver dot C A or it's slash public dash hearing dash comments and that link is also on Twitter. Speakers who pre-register with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay. And so we'll help you navigate through that. The best of you say next, though, to help us advance your slides. Those speaking on behalf of persons or groups have eight minutes to speak, but only if those being represented confirm they are online or in person and must not be speakers themselves. We also have a very longstanding commitment to equity, diversity and inclusion. And just to remind council that when addressing speakers or staff, please avoid using gendered honorifics. Tonight, our role is to be a quasi judicial body, which means council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. And council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, what should save debate for after the close of the speakers list. After hearing from speakers, council may approve the application in principle, refuse the application or refer the application to staff for further consideration. As a reminder, on April fourteenth, council approved items one to three and then began item four with opening comments from staff and the applicant questions. And then council began to hear from speakers. This evening, we'll continue to hear from speakers and once all speakers have been heard, the speakers list will close and subsequently the receipt of public comments will also close. Next, we'll hear the closing comments from staff and applicant, ask for additional questions to staff and then debate and make a decision. If we don't finish tonight, we'll recess and reconvene on Thursday, April twenty first at six P M. Before we continue, a reminder that council did receive a yellow memo related to this item on April fourteenth from the general manager of planning. Staff have have an additional yellow memo and have asked council, if we could vary the agenda in order for staff to briefly identify the change, reminder that when the time comes, we'll need to move the recommendation for this item together with today's yellow memo. So council, can we have a motion? We can just do this verbally. To vary the agenda, to vary the agenda to permit staff a moment to summarize the yellow memo.
So move.
Okay, councillor Dominado seconded by councillor DeGenova. All in favor say yay.
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 Opposed, nay. Thanks very much. Okay, so we'll turn it over to staff then. And then we'll continue on with speakers. Over to you, staff.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Desiree Drewitt and I'm the rezoning planner for the rezoning application before you this evening. Before we resume with speakers, staff would like to advise council that a revised rezoning memo was added to the agenda package late this afternoon. The purpose of the new memo is to clarify the exclusion for the amenity areas in the posted draft C D one bylaw and the rezoning memo posted on April fourteenth, twenty twenty two. The proposed amendment would align more closely with exclusions for amenity areas permitted under the local C three A zoning. And the maximum amount of excluded area has been adjusted to better reflect an appropriate scale of amenity areas for this development. Thank you.
Thanks so much for that. And just a reminder to council that when we get to the decision part, we should move the the staff report with the yellow memos. And I'm just going to flip to my list here. And council, we made it through to speaker number fifteen. And so we have sixty eight folks registered to speak to this item. And we're going to move next to Devon Hasek, who is speaker number sixteen.
Hello, greetings.
Hi, about the five minutes, whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you. Greetings, mayor and city council. My name is Devon Hasek and not only a resident of Vancouver, I actually live on West Seventh Avenue. Just a couple of blocks down the hill from this application. Oh, and I'm not a developer or realtor either. I love my neighborhood. It's an amazing place with beautiful, albeit messy cherry block and line streets, great restaurants like Indian buffet and Tomo Kazo. In transit so frequent, I could be at city hall to say hi to all of you, those who are there in just a few minutes. I've laughed, cried and cried here and even got married at the little pond behind the kids market on Granville Island. I love my neighborhood. I know it well, and that's why I'm speaking tonight. Ironically, when I bought my home almost eleven years ago, I signed the papers in the now Indigo Building, kitty corner to the site. While I still remember how nerve wracking that process was and how my realtor, Karen Carter, helped me relax with her humor. Honestly can't recall if her office is out of view of the North Shore or if the R B C building that once stood here blocked it. However, I always expected my neighborhood would change. It was something I thought I would welcome. After all, I knew what I signed up for. When I look at my window, I see downtown Vancouver. I get to watch the celebration of light fireworks show from my patio. Anything I could want in the city feels like it's moments from my doorstep. Except for a grocery store, which is one of the many reasons I'm so glad to welcome this proposal to my community. Of course, a grocery store doesn't need a tall building. I lived in Chilliwack and I know you can pave over paradise with a sprawling, carbon intensive asphalt parking lot and force people to drive a gas jetling F U V thirty minutes to get to one every day. I left that life behind for a reason and not just because my wife was accepted to U B C. Let me tell you, she would have loved to take a Skytrain to class rather than cramming into the ninety nine or the nine every day. The Broadway subway line will connect our region's university to Western Canada's most important hospital. And for that reason alone, it demands at least this amount of housing here. After all, this is not a tall building, nor is it an apex predator like some ignorantly claim. It is half the size of what's being built in many of our suburbs and matches what's proposed in Surrey's Fleetwood neighborhood. Surely we can agree the second most important business center in our province can rival the concrete forms of that distant countryside. In contrast, this design's appearance fits in with its surroundings. It blends the modern style of the Indigo Tower with the colors of the heritage building across the trees. And I don't mean that sole historical clock tower to the west. It's what the average person wants to. As the Broadway Plan refined direction survey summary shows that out of two thousand responses, sixty one percent of people supported the scale of development in Bellevue, while another thirteen percent were indifferent. Of course, you could ignore that and delay this until the Broadway comes in as time comes before you next month. However, that comes with consequences as it would ensure whatever was ultimately approved and built here would never be finished before people would need access to station below. I imagine almost all of you would be horrified and remembered as the city council not only foolishly delayed a multi billion dollar infrastructure project, but jeopardized securing infrastructure funding from senior levels of government for years to come. Of course, your legacy isn't my concern. It's my neighborhood that I care about. If it is to have a future, it needs rental homes for healthcare workers, emergency responders and educators, all who work in large numbers in the blocks around the site. The alternative is to only keep permitting what's happened with my elderly neighbors' homes. After we sold it last year and moved into the new rental apartment building at the Freemason Center, it underwent a major renovation. Now it's back on the market and just sold for almost a hundred thousand dollars more than it did last year. The fair views both my neighborhood are full of strata having examples like this. And even a decade ago, I would have never imagined seeing its old workhouses raised up on this flat, gutted and transformed into luxury single family homes, complete with water features. This development can't preserve the community's character that's been lost and gentrification of the years. But it will help resurrect it in a thoughtful, considerate and respectful manner. I look forward to a time where my neighborhood once again is home to the working class. And not only those fortunate enough to buy in at the right time. For these reasons and more than I have time for, I ask you to join me in supporting me. Thank you for your time. May your night go quickly and slava Ukrainya.
Thank you so much. I don't see any questions for you, so I am going to move to the next speaker. Council, the next speaker.
Point of information, mayor.
You don't have the floor, so you can't ask a point of information?
I'm on the queue.
That's okay. The points of information is when you only have the floor in this. Do you have questions for the speaker?
No.
Okay, at this point, you can ask points of procedure.
And a point of procedure, my question, mayor, is there are a couple of councillors that have leads of absence this evening and I note that councillor Boyle is on the call, but was not on the original call for this item. So you mentioned earlier that if we're not completed tonight, that we will be completing on Thursday night. My question is, how do you adjudicate the fact of whether councillors have heard all of the proceedings or not by the time that decision is made?
Like we've done over the last four years, councillor Hardwick, I simply ask people if they have reviewed the proceedings.
Well, in that case, if we were to make the decision tonight on this, would councillor Boyle, for example, be in a position to say that she had reviewed the proceedings?
Councillor Hardwick, as we've done for the last four years, when we come to making a decision and councillors have been absent for part of the public hearing, I do ask, as all chairs do, whether or not they reviewed the proceedings.
I'm just saying that if it's not, it wouldn't have been physically possible to to do so, then.
You can always, if you don't believe the councillor's councillor Hardwick, you can always raise a code of conduct inquiry.
Yes, I am aware, but I think it's worth mentioning because this is a controversial item. Thank you for your attention.
Speaker number seventeen, Russell Wong.
Hi, my name is Russell Wong. I support this rezoning. I'm a longtime Vancouver resident and homeowner and a volunteer with Forward Together. I don't work in development or real estate and I'm not calling on behalf of anyone else. In particular, I'm describing my personal views as a resident of Vancouver, not those of Forward Together. The reason I'm calling is that housing in Vancouver is maddeningly scarce and expensive, making us all worse off. If approved, the high rise at the new Broadway and Granville Skytrain station will provide a hundred and seventy badly needed market rental homes. Renting in a purpose built rental building like this one means you can have secure housing without the insecurity that comes with renting a condo or basement suite. And without needing to be so rich that you can take on the risk of owning an expensive condo at today's prices. The building will also add about fifty affordable rental homes, which are even more desperately needed. That means affordable for household incomes between thirty eight and eighty thousand dollars. Plus, the new building includes a grocery store so that people in the neighborhood can more easily do their grocery shopping. Finally, there's zero displacement of renters since this project is replacing an office building. I know that there's people who are not happy about the height of the building and who would prefer something smaller, even at such a central location. But allowing taller buildings is how we get more rental housing, not just condos. Michael Mortensen talks about how projects need vitamin D density to make them happen. People are willing to pay more for condos than for rentals, roughly fifty percent more. So a rental building like this needs to be roughly fifty percent higher than a condo building would be. Similarly, including twenty percent affordable rentals, which provide less income than market rentals, also means allowing more density. Another issue that's often raised is environmental impact. Compact cities are one of the best things we can do to fight climate change. There's plenty of people who want to live close to work, trading space for time. Then they can get around by taking transit, walking or biking instead of living further out and spending more time driving to and from work, fighting traffic and burning fossil fuels. What I find really maddening about the situation is everyone agrees that housing is scarce and expensive. But when it comes time to actually build more housing like this project, there's always people who seek to oppose and delay it. From listening to the speakers, this opposition is obviously sincere and heartfelt. I understand that it's natural to fear the unknown, but the only way we can fix the problem of not enough housing is to actually build more. As a result of decades of not building enough, we now have a huge mismatch between jobs and housing. A friend who works in operations management at a hospital says that the last time they had to hire an anesthesiologist, it took a very long time because nobody could afford to live reasonably close to the hospital, even on a high salary. They did eventually find someone, but it took eighteen months, reducing operating room capacity in the meantime. As you can imagine, it's also extremely difficult to hire nurses. The scarcity of housing is having a real impact on our healthcare system. As you can see from the correspondence, with over three hundred comments, both in support and opposed, and from the speakers so far, there's an ongoing battle between people who want more housing because it's so badly needed and people who are adamantly opposed. In this situation, consensus is not practical. We can't build more housing and not build more housing at the same time. Council will need to decide whether to accept or reject this rezoning based on your weighing of the costs and the benefits. I hope you'll think of more housing as a benefit, not a cost. And I hope you're willing to say, yes, this is a high rise and it's going to add a lot of housing to Broadway and Granville. But it's housing that we badly need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling in tonight. I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move to the next speaker. Council, we have Helen Louis, speaker number eighteen, Helen Louis.
Hi, council. My name is Helen and I support this project. I do work for a nonprofit housing developer, but tonight I'm here speaking for myself as a longtime resident of Vancouver and someone who grew up in the Lower Mainland. I know this area really well. I lived just two blocks away from the site for about six years. I lived in a fifteen story building. I took the ninety nine V line to study at U B C and then took the bus and trans Skytrain to work near S F U. I loved being able to walk to the beach to be so close to downtown. And also, as Devon mentioned, got to watch the fireworks in the summer from the rooftop of my building only because I lived in a high rise. As a student and as someone who had just moved out on their own without a car, life in Vancouver was only possible and only affordable with two other roommates in a two bedroom space with transit and with lots of amenities within walking distance. I know that adding more housing here is the only way that we can ensure that others can also afford to live near where they work and near the services that they need. I support this project also because it provides many rental homes, including homes with rent rates below market at zero displacement of existing tenants on site. This is a perfect site for heightened density and I know that adding a grocery store will also be a huge benefit. I currently still do live in a high rise and I prefer living in my condo over a detached home. And I believe that people should have options to live in the housing and homes that they want and need. If we want to take climate action and if we want to ensure that there are housing options for everyone, we need to add housing and we can only do this through density. This is a perfect location for this development. And I support this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight. I don't see any questions for you, so I am going to move to the next speaker. Council, the next speaker is number nineteen, James Tang.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, council. My name is James Tang and I grew up in Vancouver, although I'm currently at university in Waterloo. But I do plan on moving back after I graduate, conditional on housing prices and rents, of course. I think the case for this rezoning is clear. We are both in a housing crisis and a climate crisis and this project helps on both fronts. Firstly, the most obvious benefit of this project is that it provides two hundred twenty three units of secured rental housing and around forty nine units of moderate income housing. And those forty nine households will immensely benefit from getting access to housing with such good chance of access and close to many jobs as well. Overall, this means two hundred twenty three households that won't be on the market bidding against other tenants, putting more money in the hands of landlords. According to C M H C data, the new rental housing vacancy rate in Vancouver is one point four percent. One bedroom homes have an even lower rate of zero point seven percent and bachelor suites have the lowest of all at zero point four percent. These are absurdly low vacancy rates that really underline how much demand there is for housing that is not being met by the current supply. These two hundred twenty three households will be secure knowing that they won't be demovicted or have their landlord choose to move into their unit. And all this comes with zero displacement of any current residents. Secondly, this project will provide housing, offices and retail integrated with the Skytrain station. The largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in Metro Vancouver is cars and trucks. And this development will help reduce car dependency by increasing density near transit that we have already heavily invested in. The residents of this building will have a much easier time being car free or car light. In fact, I believe the amount of parking provided here is unnecessarily high and that the bylaws should be amended going forward to allow for and encourage less parking to be built. I also like the amount of bike parking being provided. Although I do want to emphasize that secure parking for shoppers as well as residents is important. Especially with the popularity of e-cargo bikes. Which brings me to my favorite part of the project, which is the grocery store. I think it's a great use of the location that allows residents and transit riders alike to conveniently pick up groceries. My current grocery store has an L R T stop right outside of it and it makes the whole experience way more convenient as it becomes equivalent and even better to always having your car parked right in front of the store. I think the location with it being integrated with the Broadway Skytrain makes it especially useful for commuters that use the line who will be able to drop into the store during their commute, saving them from making extra trips. All this means fewer cars owned and miles driven, not just for Vancouver, but the entire Metro Vancouver region. Additionally, this building has a very active street level that will contribute to the liveliness of the neighborhood. It's a classic Vancouver design with a podium and a tall slender point tower. I do not see how this would create an urban canyon as having tall point towers around has certainly not harmed downtown's commercial streets. Unless one is looking straight up, I do not see how the height of the tower would affect the street level at all. And compared to the renderings people showed the other night, this tower looks downright thin as those renderings showed buildings built with absurdly large footprints that cover the entire lot, which is just not realistic. Finally, I will address the exceptional nature of this rezoning. There's only one building that is going to be integrated with the Skytrain station. This exceptional circumstance clearly warrants a special process to ensure it proceeds on schedule and without disruption. Process must always be a means towards good policy and not an end in itself. The end here is a unique development with great public benefit, including secured rental housing, vacancy controlled moderate income housing, street level retail, office space and the grocery store, all integrated with the Skytrain station. To delay this would be a wasteful move. To cut down the tower means cutting out badly needed rental housing. The public benefit of this rezoning is immense. The demands for housing, especially rental housing and especially housing on top of a Skytrain station is immense. I hope the council will make the right decision and vote to approve this motion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your contribution this evening. I don't see any questions for you. So we're going to move on to speaker number twenty, who's Sean Nardi.
Good evening. You can hear me okay?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Thank you. Mister Mayor, councillors, my name is Sean Nardi and I live in Fairview. I oppose the C D one rezoning fourteen seventy seven West Broadway. I've analyzed several city documents and my analysis reveals two serious problems with staff's handling of this application. Number one, staff have repeatedly misled council and the public about its knowledge of the application's proposed height, going back to the July twenty first, twenty twenty one council meeting. And number two, for eight months, city staff have repeatedly stated that this application aligns with the Broadway plan, even though you haven't approved the plan yet. These problems demonstrate disrespect for council's authority and the public and will have the effect of further prejudicing the outcome of the Broadway plan, undermining council and eroding the public's faith in the integrity of city processes. Let's take a closer look at these two problems. Problem number one. In twenty nineteen, my neighbors and I learned about the development permit for fourteen seventy seven West Broadway. Based upon the amount of parking beneath the building, the applicant was preparing to build a much larger building. Staff were aware of this intention as stated in the development permit report. Shortly thereafter, the Georgia State reported that Stanley Woodvine had found plans in the dumpster behind the old R B C building and that a forty story tower was planned for the site. The staff report for the consideration of a rezoning proposal at fourteen seventy seven West Broadway stated that between twenty eleven and twenty twenty one, P C I expressed interest in additional development capacity at this site multiple times, including a rezoning inquiry in twenty eighteen. My analysis of M R P applications from spring twenty eighteen shows that staff knew four years ago that P C I Development wished to build a tower of this height at this address. At the July twenty first, twenty twenty one council meeting, when council considered this report, councillor Fry asked John Grotenberg about the forty story height and he dodged the question stating that, quote, "No determination on height has been made at this point." A month later, Sun reporter Dan Fumano reported that P C I Development was seeking to build a thirty nine story building at fourteen seventy seven West Broadway. Writing about the July twenty first council meeting, Fumano wrote, quote, "At that meeting, staff repeatedly declined to give any indication about what kind of size P C I might be eyeing." Kirby Young pressed staff citing speculation and discussion in the community and asking, is it conceivable it could be forty stories? Staff did not answer, but it turns out the forty story speculation wasn't far off. Two months afterwards, in early November, staff released phase three of the Broadway Plan, which recommended thirty to forty story towers at the intersection of Granville and Broadway. And one month later, in early December, when this application went to the urban design panel, a male city staffer responded to a question stating that, quote, "What went to council in July was the general notion of a thirty nine story building." How is that possible? Mister Grotenberg told you that no determination had been made on height. Either a determination had been made or hadn't been made. The verdict is in, folks. The height of this application was decided a long time ago and we've all been hoodwinked. Staff have not been transparent with you nor the public about the facts in this case and it calls into question the legitimacy of the entire application process as well as the ethics and integrity of our civic governance. Problem number two. In June twenty twenty one, Theresa O'Donnell told the public that no decisions had been made on heightened density changes in the Broadway Plan scope area. When staff asked you for permission to consider this proposal one month later, they claimed that the inquiry aligned with the anticipated policy directions for heightened density in the plan. At the same meeting, councillor Dominado asked whether this application was consistent and aligned with the Broadway Subway supportive policies agreement. John Grotenberg responded, yes. I have read the supportive policies agreement and I can tell you that it does not prescribe any heights or densities for the Broadway Plan area, nor a thirty nine story skyscraper at Granville and Broadway. Furthermore, in the Vancouver Plan update that council discussed on that same day, staff recommended excluding C three A sites like this one from the M R P program to avoid conflicts with the Broadway Plan. Lastly, seven times throughout the referral report for this application, city staff state that the proposed heightened density of the application aligns with the Broadway Plan refined directions, even though the Broadway Plan hasn't been finished nor has it been approved by council. I don't understand staff's conflicting statements. Either decisions have been finalized with respect to heightened density for the Broadway Plan or they haven't. And you are the only ones with the authority to make those decisions. Either way, staff seem confident about the heightened density decisions you are going to make, even though you haven't made them yet. This is deliberately misleading and demonstrates that the city has only been paying lip service to the public throughout the entire Broadway Plan engagement process. throughout the entire Broadway Plan engagement process and that staff are attempting to manipulate your decision-making now. In summary, there are two significant reasons why you should reject this proposal. Staff have repeatedly misled council and the public about its knowledge of the application's proposed height, going back to the July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one council meeting. And for eight months, staff have repeatedly stated that this application aligns with the Broadway Plan, even though you haven't approved the plan yet. The preceding information demonstrates that this application has been advanced on false pretenses. Based on this, I ask you to reject this rezoning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You do have questions? Councillor Hartwick, up to five minutes.
Thank you very much, Sean. That was an interesting timeline. Can you make your remarks available to council if you haven't already?
With pleasure.
I asked the applicant about questions about the timeline initially, and so what I thought I heard you say was the proponent had expressed interest in additional development capacity on the site as early as twenty-eleven.
That's correct.
Is that accurate?
The June twenty- That is correct. The June twenty-eighth staff report for the consideration of a rezoning proposal at the site states that, starting in twenty-eleven, PCI expressed interest in additional development capacity at this site multiple times over the ten years that followed, including submitting a rezoning inquiry in twenty-eighteen. And my analysis of MERP applications from spring twenty-eighteen shows that staff knew that PCI Development wished to build a skyscraper of this height at this address almost four years ago. So staff were not being forthright with you in July, and the notion that this thirty-nine-story building suddenly fell out of the sky seven months ago is hogwash. The proponent has been chomping at the bit to build this skyscraper for at least four years, probably longer, and staff have known it.
Well, that timeline would certainly align with the genesis of the Broadway subway. Can you tell us, you sound like someone that's involved, what the public engagement process, you said you live where?
I live in Fairview, and so I watched this very carefully and involved myself as much as I could, but I can tell you there really wasn't much of a public engagement. The proponent didn't engage with the neighborhood at large, the Fairview-South Granville Action Committee, Broadway Slopes Group, or any of the neighboring residential communities and stratas who are very unhappy about this rezoning. I understand that they spoke to some friendly groups who told them what they wanted to hear, and that's about it. So the idea that the proponent made on Thursday night that this, you know, there was a big church barbecue and everybody agreed on this is a little bit of a stretch. Moreover, the proponent wasn't required to hold a pre-application open house, and there was no city-led open house either. What staff did was post the rezoning on the Shape Your City website, where the public could provide limited input and submit questions and wait for an email response. So there was no WebEx, no open house, nothing. Incidentally, you'll notice that the opposition outweighed support in the Shape Your City website feedback that's in your referral report.
So it's a pattern for me of development-centered transit as opposed to transit-centered development. But thank you very much, and again, I'd really appreciate receiving your remarks. Thank you.
I will. Thank you very much.
Councillor Fry, questions?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And thanks, Sean, for joining us today and sharing your thoughts on it. I want to just focus on the actual development. I mean, I appreciate that the Broadway Plan has been quite laggard and indeed was intended to deliver quite some time ago. And so I think that there may have been reasonable assumptions based on the fact that this is a pretty significant transit site, that there would be heights here. So I want to focus on the actual development rather than the process that led here. I'm not going to debate whether or not the process was flawed. I certainly accept your submission, though. What would be an acceptable kind of height for you and delivery of affordability for a location like this? Do you have issue with the height and form of the building as it's being proposed?
Yes, I do, and I would recommend that we should be looking at something within C3A zoning. I understand that from a sustainability consideration, which is of concern to you, that buildings in the neighborhood of eleven to twelve stories are about as tall as we can go while maintaining sustainability. Furthermore, the developer has opened the site since two thousand and seven, so they have already made money hand over fist just on the property inflation alone on this site, which needs to be evaluated and considered in the financial reviews that staff are doing of this building while considering what, you know, what kind of concessions the city makes to the developer. So I would suggest that we should be building within C3A zoning and at the same time, providing the type of affordable housing that we aim for in the MERP program. There's no reason why we can't be doing that, and the argument that it's not financially feasible are bunk. Furthermore, if we're looking at building wood-framed buildings in order to make these buildings sustainable, eleven to twelve stories is, if I understand correctly right now, within the permitted allowance by, I think it's the fire department or the fire regulations.
Well, that's interesting. So you're saying eleven to twelve wood frame with MERP? Obviously, we wouldn't deliver the same number of MERP units, but I can take that away. It seems like a challenge. I don't know building performance like the experts would or the developers would. Would you be willing to sacrifice the affordability quotient if it brought the heights down?
I'm sorry, can you ask that a question again, councillor? Would I be willing?
Well, I mean, so what we hear about MERPs and stuff is that it requires scale to bring in that affordability. So are you, would you, given your druthers, would you rather have the lower heights and less affordability or no affordability, for instance?
No, and I argue that that is absolutely hogwash. We've analyzed, and my neighbors and I have analyzed several buildings along Broadway that have come to council in the last few years, and for some reason, you're getting poor information. We analyzed the financials for those buildings, and for instance, twenty-five thirty-eight Birch, it was a financial success at sixteen stories. At twenty-eight stories, it was a home run for the developer, or it will be a home run for the developer. So the idea that concessions have to be made, both DCL, CACs, and height and density to the developers in order to get a measly twenty percent affordability in these buildings, somebody's pulling the wool over your eyes. This is absolutely not the case, and we've studied these numbers very intently and very closely. So for somebody like PCI who's owned this property since two thousand and seven, there is a lot more fat in there than you are being told, and we should be getting a lot more affordability out of that building, especially if you're giving permission to build it to thirty-nine stories. We're not getting good value here, and that's a disgrace. Moreover, when you do an upzoning like this, you actually decrease affordability in the neighborhood. This building is going to increase property evaluations in the neighborhood, which are going to, in existing rental and strata buildings, are going to lead to increased property taxes, increased rents, and are already encouraging some building owners, and Carrie Gold wrote about this in a Globe article in the weekend, already encouraging business, rather, property owners not to upgrade their buildings and to look ahead to demevictions. So this has a bit of a double whammy to it in the sense that we're not getting good value, and furthermore, it's going to actually increase property values and lead to more, to higher rents and more evictions in our neighborhood.
Okay, I'm out of time. Thanks.
Councillor Weave also has questions for you?
Yeah, I want to speak a little bit to the process. Can you talk as someone that wants to be very involved in this process? Can you talk about the open houses that you said you weren't able to, no open houses or are they just virtual open houses? Can you talk a little bit about your opportunities to have influence or have conversations with either developer or staff throughout this process on this building?
There were zero opportunities to have conversations with the developer because council, I believe it was a year and a half or two years ago, decided not to have pre-application, decided to make pre-application open houses optional, so there was no opportunity to speak to the developer. Staff did not have in-person open houses, I understand because of COVID, but beyond that, they didn't do a WebEx or any type of, you know, virtual face-to-face meeting. All they did was put up a page on the Shape Your City site where we could fill out an online form and say we oppose or support, make a couple comments, ask a question, and then wait for an email to come back. There was, you know-
There's no opportunity for a WebEx conversation or ask questions in a public forum?
No, correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And that is, if you want to stifle dissent and kill our democracy by a thousand cuts, that's the way you do it.
Okay, I just wanted to get your side of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's it for questions for the speaker, so we're going to move on to the next speaker. Thanks for calling in tonight. The next speaker is Chloe McGuire. Speaker twenty-one, Chloe McGuire.
Hello.
Hi there. You have up to five minutes to speak, and could you just let us know if you're a resident of Vancouver?
Yes, I'm a resident of Vancouver. I'm twenty-two, and I'm calling in support of the application for fourteen seventy-seven West Broadway. So as a young renter, I've been struggling to find a balance between location and price of housing since I moved out, and this development really speaks to both with elements of affordable housing and the Skytrain station. My friends and I all grew up in the city and recently graduated from university, and no one can afford to live here anymore. All the available rental stock is often rundown, overpriced, or privately owned. We should be encouraging our young professionals to build their careers in Vancouver instead of leaving to more affordable cities. A speaker earlier made a good point about healthcare workers who are unable to afford to live near the hospitals they work at. Additionally, many people living in the new building wouldn't need to own a car and could use public transit instead, which is both cheaper and better for the environment. I've been following the conversation about this project a lot, and I don't really understand why people in the community would be opposed. Council is able to address the housing crisis by supporting proposed developments such as this one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. I don't see any questions for you, so we're going to move to the next speaker. Speaker twenty-two is Jonathan West.
Can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Okay, sorry, thank you for that. Yeah, so I'm calling as a longtime Vancouverite. I've until recently lived in the neighborhood. I rented in the neighborhood and enjoyed it. I chose to live there because a lot of my life revolves around the neighborhood and frequently go through it. Unfortunately, I lived in a terrible apartment that was overpriced, and eventually, you know, with the family on the way, I had to move. I've moved east, as I've continued to do most of my life through Vancouver, and the reason I support this development is the fact that it creates affordable housing for people in the neighborhood. And overall, I would say also, I previously would go to fine grocery stores, and Mineheart was not to pick on them, but the one available option, which is way out of whack and not affordable at all. So this development provides affordable housing to young renters like myself and continues to allow people, young people, to live in the city, within the city core. On that note, finally, I'd say that the composition of the neighborhood now is aging, and it doesn't have the vibrancy that it once did when all those buildings were originally built and the apartments were there. It's, you know, I went through it today, and you see people not to pick on the elderly, but it's full of people in lockers, and there's a certain lack of vibrancy to it today, so that's why I support it.
Thank you. I don't see any questions for you, so we will move on to the next speaker. Thanks so much. The speaker is number twenty-three, Fraser McKean.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council and city staff. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I am in favor of this proposal. I am a Vancouver resident, and I grew up not too far from the site, and I now rent a condo with my wife somewhat close. And my whole family has sort of grown up in this area, and so we know it very well. It's a very unique neighborhood, and we all want to see it continue to be successful. So projects like the one before you will enhance and bring this area back to where it should be, and it's something that I would like to support, and I would like to see you support as well. Secure tenure renting, transit, convenient access to groceries, it's all something the city needs. It's within the stated policy of the Broadway Plan. The aging rental stock, the single-family homes, it just doesn't allow people like me and my wife to be able to move back to an area where I grew up, and I really would like to do that. I work in sustainability. I know that the city is really making a push for projects like this, and the fact that it's going to be a transit hub, it's going to have density, it's going to have rental, all make this, I think, a necessary project for the city and for the area as well. So thanks for the chance to speak, and I hope you can see as many benefits as I do in this project.
Thanks for calling in. I don't see any questions for you, and so we'll move to the next speaker. Speaker twenty-four, Paul Morris.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors.
Hi there, up to five minutes.
I'm Paul Morris, a thirty-five-year resident of Fairview, first as a renter, then as a condo owner. I oppose this spot rezoning and the precedent it sets. I would like to address the issue of environmental impact. I'm a retired research leader for durability and sustainability at FP Innovations. I was part of the team that investigated and solved Vancouver's leaky condo crisis. That crisis was due mostly to a nineteen eighty-six surge in construction using designs inappropriate for our local climate and ignoring building science. In nineteen ninety-six, Bob Mackey, chief building official, stood up to developers and said, "This stops now. We're going to follow the science and return to rainscreen design." The relevance of all this will become increasingly obvious as I continue. In twenty-eleven, Vancouver brought out its Greenest City Plan. In twenty-sixteen, the city published a plan to achieve net-zero greenhouse gas emissions from the operation of new buildings by twenty-thirty. In twenty-twenty, the city published its Climate Emergency Action Plan. In twenty-twenty-two, why on earth would the city be encouraging the worst kind of build construction for adverse climate impacts? Five years ago, buildings were reported to generate fifty-six percent of emissions in Vancouver, exceeding the contributions of transportation and waste combined. Highriders are incompatible with Vancouver's greener city aspirations. They are extremely difficult and expensive to build to net zero, perhaps impossible without wind turbines. Even the city's own net-zero plan states "Low-rise, multi-unit residential buildings are the ideal construction type for cost-effective, high-performing building envelopes and ventilation systems." And there are good reasons for this. UBC's professor Patrick Condon says, "High-rise buildings are subject to too much sun and wind, and all glass skins are, despite many improvements to the technology, inherently inefficient." Furthermore, local experts RDH showed concrete balconies and slab edges suck heat out of the building in winter. In twenty-fourteen, a city-sponsored report by Lighthouse Sustainable Building Centre found for office buildings, the greater number of floors, the higher the relative emission intensity. For multi-unit residential buildings, the energy performance of low-rise was twenty-two percent better than high-rise. "But," you may say, "high-rise design is improving in energy efficiency." Not so. RDH found heating and total energy consumption in residential high-rises increased over thirty to forty years despite perceived improvements in energy efficiency," their words. In twenty-nineteen, BC Hydra report stated, "Despite many new high-end condo buildings being marketed as energy-efficient, those living in them have a much larger energy footprint than those living in older-style buildings, four times the energy use of low-rises." Seattle's Office of Sustainability concluded their residential high-rises "have sixty percent higher energy use intensity than low-rise and forty-five percent more than high-rise, despite advances in energy efficiency," their words. That's a lot of "despite." That's also a lot of different percentages, sorry about that. It's because of the various ways of comparing energy performance, but low-rise is always much, much better than high-rise. So far, we've talked about operational emissions. I believe the city's twenty-sixteen operational emissions targets, which this proposal would meet, are due to be updated very soon and presumably reduced. But we also need to consider embodied emissions from extraction, manufacture, and construction. I noticed staff and the proponent failed to answer councillor Swanson's question on this topic. I understand the city plans to put in place embodied emission targets very soon, but not for this building. Concrete is the worst construction material for embodied emissions. At the broadest level, life cycle emissions include embodied and operational emissions plus those from demolition and waste disposal. And green concrete has a minor impact on overall life cycle emissions of high-rises. Studies in the USA and Europe have shown in a given area, the same population density as used in high-rises can be accommodated by low-rise development with forty-five percent of the life cycle emissions. can be accommodated by low-rise development with forty-five percent of the life cycle emissions. For rezonings like this, a twenty-nineteen city-sponsored report by Zera Solutions recommended full life cycle analysis using the Athena software developed by FP Innovations, the company I used to work for. The current president of the spun-off Athena Institute is Jennifer O'Connor. I hired, in nineteen ninety-eight, I hired Jennifer as a building scientist to help me tackle the leaky condo crisis.
Thank you. That is your, I'm sorry to interrupt, this is your five minutes, but you do have a question from councillor Hardwick. Councillor Hardwick, go ahead, up to five minutes.
Thank you very much, Paul. I, I'd like to request your remarks, since you clearly wrote, wrote your own script. I think it would be really valuable for council to have the details that you have spoken to us about today. And I regret that councillor Carr is not here because she's very knowledgeable in this area. My question to you is, from a sustainability perspective, what do you think would be an appropriate height for this building, riffing off a question that councillor Fry asked earlier?
Well, from a sustainability standpoint, I would like to see density and affordability achieved by four-to-six-story construction across wide swaths of this city. I don't understand why the proponent can't deliver a grocery store and a Skytrain entrance by the deadline with the existing five-story approval.
Wow, I wasn't expecting that. The argument, of course, is that this is transit-centered development and we should be putting as much density around transit stops. And this, again, is, it's subway stops, so it's not surface rail. How do you respond to that, that suggestion that transit-centered development is, should be at the heart and the density that surrounds it around subway stops?
Well, Fairview is already amongst the highest density areas in, in the neighborhood. I mean, if, if, there really is a push to, to increase the height in this, this location, then up to twelve stories would, would be, would actually reduce the differential with high-rises, with low-rise by about thirty percent. And net zero is within reach with twelve stories. So that, that's, that's about as, as high as I would want to see things go. And coincidentally, that's what Brian Palmquist is now saying he should have recommended on reflection. Brian and I worked together on the leaky condo crisis way back.
Interesting. Again, a request, if you would send in your remarks to council, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Can do.
Thank you. That's it for questions, so I will move on to the next speaker. Council, the next speaker is Sal Robinson, speaker number twenty-five.
Hi, can you hear me? Everybody asks that.
Yep, sure can. Please go ahead, up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I'm Sal Robinson, I live in Kits. The last time you heard from me was about the spot zoning at Second and Larch, when council approved a MIRP building whose appeal was eight three-bedroom suites. Oddly, after your approval, the plans changed to increase the density and reduce the big suites to two, which is the kind of bait and switch that leaves residents wondering why we bother, but we continue to bother. And that's why I'm talking to you now. Last July, city staff advocated for a proposal to rezone fourteen seventy-seven West Broadway, claiming it merited an exception to the moratorium on such spot zonings until the approval of the Broadway plan. The staff reports supporting their recommendation noted that the emerging direction on increased height was shared with the community. The report omitted to say that the community did not want the increased height. The staff report contained no details about how different a rezoned structure might be, not how much taller, not how much more dense, not even how many parking spaces would end up in what was already under construction. They knew enough about the plan to advise you to give it a hearing, but couldn't or wouldn't share the details you repeatedly asked for. Councillor Fry asked, "Could it be as high as forty stories?" Councillor Dominado wanted to know if there were any sense of the height and density and got the unsatisfactory answer that they would be additional. Councillor Kirby Young, in attempting to out the elephant in the room, asked again if the building might be forty stories. The pauses before the replies kept getting longer. Yet most of you were somehow, inexplicably to me, persuaded to vote yes. Despite the natural misgivings you may have had that there was really more going on than you were being told, you bought the pig in the poke and here we are with the pig revealed in all its enormity. Enormity meaning the great or extreme scale, seriousness, or extent of something perceived as bad. Proponents of this project talk about the boxes it ticks, pet-friendly, secured rental housing near transit, and an increase in public safety with eyes on the street. Which sounds great until you consider that the residents will use most of those two-hundred-and-eighty-five parking spots for the cars that will carry their kids to a school they can find space in and their dogs to a patch of green where they can run around. Eyes on the street, in Jane Jacobs' terms, means human activity at street level, not people thirty stories up, too far aloft to even wave to. Proponents of this project disregard the plight of the unlucky neighbors doomed to its shade or pedestrians beating against the wind that its height will intensify. Nothing makes a residential tower at this location a good idea. And it contributes nothing to making Broadway a great street as described in the Broadway plan. Planning is the foundation of the city's evolution. Because of its size and scope, the Broadway plan needs a particularly robust and impermeable foundation so that the public trusts it will support the structure it's being designed to carry. Any shortcut puts a crack in that foundation. Every tweaking of the rules puts a crack in that foundation. Every staff report dismissive of residents' concerns puts a crack in that foundation. Every workaround, every spot zoning, every logic-defying council decision puts another crack in that foundation. Every appearance of a foregone conclusion that the fix is in blows a hole in the foundation of public trust. And that foundation is looking pretty drafty these days. It's not like council hasn't received dubious advice before. Falls Creek South comes to mind. A long time ago, in sixty-seven, planning officials were accused of duping the aldermen into approving an entire freeway system when they thought they were approving a replacement George of Viaduct. The huge uproar over the impending destruction of Chinatown and over the tactics of planners who had hired a consultant to endorse their preferred scheme caused a majority of the aldermen, which were not councillors in those days, to reverse their decision just three months later. Following that reversal, one observer commented, "The aldermen have acted in a responsible fashion after becoming familiar with the issue and seeing the total picture. Previously, they had not been fully informed of all the ramifications of their decision by city officials." With three towers now approved or proposed, the ramifications are the fall of Fairview and the rise of Brentwood West. I ask you to choose a healthier, more human-scale future for Vancouver residents along Broadway and at fourteen seventy-seven West Broadway. I oppose this rezoning and I hope you will send the blueprints back to the dumpster they came from. Thank you for listening to me.
Councillor Hardwick has questions for you? Go ahead, councillor Hardwick, up to five minutes.
I'd also appreciate a copy of your remarks, please, Sal.
Okay.
To all of council, please. You mentioned in your final comment about human scale. Question that has been asked multiple times now is, what, what scale, what height would be acceptable, do you think, at this location?
I think at that location and any location, anything above twelve stories is too tall. In, in Kitsflano, when, when they were, the bulldozers were, were held up back in the seventies, they were trying to stop what were called skyscrapers in those days of twelve stories. And those twelve-story buildings are still here, but they're, they're widely spread apart with lots of green space around them. And it's a very walkable neighborhood. I just don't see this at Broadway and Granville. I, I, I think the gentleman who said, "Quit at the, quit at the grocery store, make everybody happy."
I don't, I don't know quite what to say to that. I just, do you have a sense of, of the motivation here? What, what, why there seems to be a need to promote growth in excess of pace of change? Which to me is the core question. You're, you're seeing a pattern emerging here. And I know we have to talk specifically about this, this particular development application, but there has been a pattern developing. And you've, any final comment on that?
It, it looks like that to me. I really hope that the, the one that's already approved at Birch will, will be the only one. It'll come to be known as the Fairview folly. And, and everything else can be something much more livable.
Great, thanks very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, that's it for questions. I am going to move on to the next speaker. And the next speaker is Nathan Davidovich, speaker number twenty-six.
Mr. Mayor, do you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes, please.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor and council. You know, I've been complaining about the vision, policies, and rules for, you know, for quite some time. And this proposed development at fourteen seventy-seven would have never got to the stage we are now at any other city in B.C. Vancouver has different rules for planning and rezoning. And hopefully, the B.C. government will change that very soon. Because it just doesn't make any sense. At present, all transit stations are owned by the B.C. government, except the waterfront station. B.C. government staff made mistakes on the Broadway subway by allowing a private company to build fourteen seventy-seven and South Gondal Station. However, now, the NDP government got it finally acting. And, and with the new Bill Sixteens, station site will no longer be given to private companies. They might even buy this site from the present developer. You know, though, they can do that retroactively, they can buy it. And I hope they do, but we don't know yet. Bill sixteen hasn't been passed yet and your staff never even gave you any information on Bill sixteen. Many councillors are asking the wrong questions. The proposed height at fourteen seventy-seven, yes, it's similar to other heights of stations in Burnaby, Coquitlam, Surrey. But the average density of people per square kilometer in Vancouver is two or three times more than the density in those cities. Vancouver has the highest density in all of Canada. Richmond cannot build high buildings because of why we are. So they build more bulky buildings. We can do the same thing here. We, we can buy the whole block around the station and, 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 and instead of building a forty-story building, you can buy, build a twenty-story building. The FSR would be the same, it's just spreading the development over a large area like it's done in Richmond. The distance between the station is also a factor in the overall density. And the spacing proposed on the UBC extension is almost twice the spacing of the, of the present Broadway subway. So we have a whole bunch of problems here. Why should Vancouver be so dense and other neighboring cities are not, not so much? Shouldn't they be more dense? It's, it's, it's one regional district. Councillor Webb pointed out that there'd be, not be a public bike parcade or washroom. Well, in Metrotown, a fifteen-hundred bike parcade is being built by a private developer. And a public washroom is inside the Metrotown station. So, you know, why should we get inferior stations, bad development, while other places are doing way better than, than in Vancouver? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. You do have a question from councillor Hardwick? Councillor Hardwick?
Thank you, Nathan. I wanted to pick up on one of your themes, which was the distance between stations. Part of the logic for the height and density at this location is, again, it's this notion of transit-centered development, which I'm going to start calling development-centered transit. But the idea is that that justifies this height at this location. How, to what extent does, did, uh, distance between stations play a role in the location of buildings such as this?
Well, the average distance all over the world is one kilometers for rapid transit between stations. And the present Broadway subway, just from, you know, just to our viewers, is around that area, that, that one kilometer or, or less. And, which means most people can walk to a station anywhere within three or four blocks, up to, you know, four hundred meters is usually the, the, the walking distance that's comfortable for most people, but some go as high as six. But so they'll have a, a choice of going either east or west to whichever station they want to go. Which means if you build between the, the two stations, uh, 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 not, not high-rises, not super-high-rises, but just a, a medium-high-rises, then you'll get the same density as building super-high-rises just right at the stations and, and, and then lower high-rises in between. And that's the way it's, it is in, in most other countries in the world.
So paraphrasing, then, we should be looking at, you know, that medium density along the line in-between stations and distributing the density more evenly within, I think, one of the earlier speakers spoke about the...
I mean, Richmond sort of has to do it because of, of the airport, they are not allowed to build so high. And that's why you can see how it is the Canada Line in Richmond, all the, 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 the medium high-rises that they have. And they still get the same population, the same density as, as, as other stations. And that's the, that's what should be done. But, you know, hopefully...
So I guess the big question then is, if that's a more desirable model, why are developers not doing that? Why are they pressing for these, you know, su- super-high buildings instead of something in the order, a bunch of them at twelve stories? And I think the answer is obvious. So, yeah, thank you very much, Nathan. Always appreciate your input from a transportation perspective.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, that's it for questions to you. Thank you, speaker for calling in. And I'm going to move to speaker number twenty-seven, who's Ward Stewart.
Hi, everybody, can you hear me fine?
Sure can, five minutes, please.
Great, thank you. Dear Mayor and council, thanks for your time and attention today. My name is Ward Stewart, I'm speaking today in opposition of the proposed zoning at fourteen seventy-seven West Broadway. I'm an entrepreneur and fourth-generation Vancouverite, living in Falls Creek South. I'd like to add, in addition for paying the city's taxes monthly, we pay a land lease to the city of Vancouver, which amounts to ten times the amount of property taxes that are collected every year. And I humbly request, therefore, that you give my opposition ten times more consideration. But that aside, three points of, main points of objection are the, the residents of the area and Riddlards, Vancouver, didn't order Mcmega towers, nor asked for them to be supersized. For some context, the requesting zoning would produce a tower of four-hundred-and-ten feet tall at thirty-nine stories. For context, if you stand at the highest point in Vancouver, which is the Observation Deck at Cleveland's Park, coincidentally, the elevation is exactly four-hundred-and-ten feet, you would still be looking up at the tower by about a hundred feet because the base is at the rise of Broadway. It's already a hundred feet above sea level. All the inputs and comments from citizens that I've read and reviewed from city Vancouver, city plan sources had selected a preference for low and mid-rise, which would be more in line with actual growth projections and, as others have said before, more human scale. Nor, nor do we get to choose no towers through this, so an overwhelm... Nor did we get to choose no towers through this overwhelming number of participants. As previously noted, I chose low and median density. So I think this is sort of at odds with the feedback that you've been getting from citizens. The second point I'd like to make is the practice of spot rezoning feels like a bad faith bait and switch tactic, which further undermines the trust in our institutions and in due process. Public consultations seem to be structured more to manufacturer consent rather than with a dialogue with citizens, as others have pointed out. Current residents feel, as I do, like we're the expendables as the exchange for hiring pair residents. Clearly, the rezoning at fourteen seventy seven West Broadway from five stories to thirty nine stories, with only less than a month of time before the comprehensive Broadway plan is presented, seems more an early test of weapons of mass densification currently lurking within the Broadway plan itself. And I'd also add that mega towers will not bring affordability or livability that the proponents are selling us on. I know I used to be in the development game promoting that whole affair for decades. So I know a little bit about how this thing works. There simply will be continued massive land inflation and more tiny expensive apartments as a consequence of this. Of note, again, the Vancouver Sun today, a recent study ranked Vancouver as the third least affordable city globally in respect to median income to median housing prices. We were just behind Sydney, Australia, and third behind the winner of unaffordability Olympics, Hong Kong. So the study, to get into some specifics of that, the study defines affordability index of three being tolerable. Anything above five point one is defined as extremely unaffordable. Vancouver's index is thirteen point one, so more than double the affordability index above what they consider extreme unaffordability. Hong Kong, at the top of the unaffordability index, has a multiple of median income to median house prices, twenty three point two. So I've spent some time in Hong Kong on business over the years, and I'm always fascinated by its residential districts, which are forests of residential towers that, factually speaking, have not reduced affordability if we look at the current study. As a way of further comparison, Vancouver has a population density of about fifty five hundred residents per square kilometre, according to the twenty sixteen census. Hong Kong has a density of seven thousand two hundred and eighteen residents per square kilometre, according to the twenty twenty review.
Thank you so much, that is the five minutes, but you do have questions.
Okay, great, thanks.
Councillor Kirby Young, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, and thanks for speaking to council, I just wanted to clarify one thing that you said. And I heard you say that, I think there was a reference to sort of affording ten times the weight because of a lease paid to City of Vancouver, I'm assuming, is that a land lease for co-op housing?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so you're in the, I'm guessing you're in the Falls Creek South on the, as one of the co-op projects, is that correct? And just in terms of context?
We're in the strata, so in the context of how the, yeah, so the strata paid for the land and a lot of the development for the supported housing and the co-ops to a degree. And so the land lease that I pay every month, and actually we prepaid it recently, is, in fact, went to towards having a more balanced residential makeup of this particular area. So that's sort of the underlying point. Markets have never, throughout the history of market economies, done anything for the citizenry. It's been the other institutions, government and religious organisations and such that have done that. So being too reliant on market economies doesn't get you where you need to go. And I think that's sort of the larger point I like to underline in that, in that case.
Right, okay, that's helpful, thank you, I'll leave it there, thanks for taking the time.
Councillor Hardwick, up to five minutes.
Speaking of market economies, this focus, you know, using this location as an example, is predicated on the belief that we need to be promoting growth at a significant rate to accommodate future population that is desperate. And through the lens of your economic statement, do you see, well, first of all, do you understand why we would be promoting growth in excessive projected pace of change? And as part of that, what jobs or economics sector growth do you see that would support growth in excess of pace of change?
Yeah, well, to the first part of that.
Literally foundational.
Yeah, it is foundational, so, yeah, literally, there's no logical, I mean, as others have pointed out, the presenters and, you know, within the extracted growth, like the twenty twenty growth trajectory is very minimal, you know, we grow at about one percent per year. And that's only a few thousand units per year, whereas the plan is looking at providing something like two hundred and fifty thousand actual units. So it's quite excessive. The underlying economics are really beneficial to the city that collects, you know, the amenity fees for this and the developer industrial complex that are also beneficiaries of this whole thing. As to the economic, what businesses, there's been no evidence to put forward to suggest or even explain who these are going to be for. So I think it's sort of a plan eviction, you know, the highest and best bidder gets to live in Vancouver and everybody else gets a plan evicted.
Thank you for your input, appreciate it.
Yeah, you have, thank you.
That's it for questions, we are on to the next speaker, speaker number twenty eight is Bill Telemann.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, Bill Telemann, long time Vancouver resident, I live on West Broadway in Kitzlino and I oppose this proposal. First, I want to thank you councillors and mayor for taking time last Thursday night and tonight again, and possibly another night. It is time away from family and friends and should be appreciated. But that said, I am disturbed that the first night of this controversial hearing on a massively overhyped high-rise tower was held on the Thursday night before the Easter four day long weekend. That discourages citizen participation and is again part of the democratic deficit that I've seen at Vancouver City Council. I listened with dismay as many speakers were absent despite taking the time and trouble to register to address council that night. I listened with dismay as two of the most expert presenters of that evening, architect Brian Palmquist and Stephen Bohus, landscape architect, who showed council extensive architectural drawings, shadowing and other important factors, ended with next to no questions from council, except from councillor Hardwick. And Palmquist, he wasn't just an architect, he was a managing architect for the Falls Creek North official development plan. And then with tonight's hearing, it started with you, Mayor Stewart, asking speakers to not talk about the Broadway plan, which is an upcoming issue shortly for council. It does unfortunately remind me of the faulty towers episode, how appropriate is that? Where Basil Falty told the foreign visitors and says, and told, whatever you do, don't talk about the war, which of course he does. So I must ask, why are we tonight debating a thirty nine story giant tower right in the middle of the area covered by the Broadway plan when it's coming up? This hearing should have been delayed until after that Broadway plan has been debated on and voted on by council, not before that. Better still, this issue should be debated and then put on the October Vancouver election ballot. Let every citizen vote on the future of our city, with no significant delay to development plans and a clear signal to the province about overriding councils. But no, that is highly unlikely to happen. I would also ask council, did any of you run in twenty eighteen's election on a specific platform, telling voters you would support a thirty nine story building at Broadway and Granville? I strongly doubt that. If you do approve this high-rise, the giant high-rise tower, it will be the start of turning Broadway both east and west into a concrete canyon of huge high-rise towers, demolishing thousands of currently affordable rental spaces all along that corridor. There are clearly alternatives to this massive tower. Look to the great cities of the world, look to Paris, look to London, Barcelona, Amsterdam, for a few examples. They do not have thirty nine story towers at every underground subway station, not at all. Paris, in fact, severely limits heights. This proposal would not even have made it to city council in Paris because it's way too tall, Paris. But here we are in Vancouver discussing it. And any city council that proposed such towers in those cities would probably run out of town on a rail. I believe Vancouver is at a crossroads, West Broadway and Granville might just be the literal crossroads we're at. The soul of Vancouver will not be saved, nor will affordable housing be perpetuated by massive high-rise towers, no matter how good the intentions of this council actually are. We can be one of the great cities of the world, but no, not like this. We can do much, much better, thank you, council.
Thanks for your comments, you do have questions from councillor Hardwick?
Thanks, Bill, what does better look like?
Better looks like the world's great cities, better looks like Barcelona, Amsterdam, Paris, London. Better looks like more density, which is supported by the residents, supported by people in that immediate area for sure, and across the city. We don't know what the people of Vancouver think about this proposal or other proposals that council has been considering under spot rezoning. We don't know, I don't think that most people in that area necessarily even know or were informed by council by mail to their residents that this proposal was underway and that they could speak to it tonight. I think there's an extremely limited amount of information, as it is with other topics that come towards council. And I hear that from my neighbours and from people all across the city and around who contact me or who I run into contact with, that they just don't really know anything about something's going on. If I tell them that there's a thirty nine story building being proposed for Broadway and Granville, and it's going to be debated at tonight's city council meeting, I think most people that I talked to would be shocked. They wouldn't even know what's going on.
So what do you, what's your take on the democratic process then? Because, you know, from my experience, I've certainly seen a shift and during the pandemic, things have been curtailed to a very large and obvious extent. What do you see a successful democratic process around a development such, application as this, what would that look like?
I certainly appreciate that COVID has limited some aspects of past public engagement. That doesn't mean that it should be used as an excuse. I think there's far more that the city can do to inform citizens, to bring them into the process, allow them to have their opinion. And I'm not saying that my view would necessarily prevail. Maybe the citizens who live and residents who live, be they renters or taxpayers or building owners or homeowners, maybe they do are totally happy with the thirty nine story tower, maybe they'd be happy to have them all along Broadway. Maybe they can be convinced that that's the right thing to do. But I don't think that's what's happening here, I don't think people know what's going on, I don't think they're well informed, I don't think they're democratically engaged. And again, something, as I said in my remarks, something as big as the Broadway plan, put it on the ballot in October, let people decide. We've put all sorts of other questions to people all over this city and through this province. I've been involved in four binding referendum the last fifteen, twenty years. We can put major questions to the voters who actually pay the bills here, the taxpayers and the residents of the city, people who are qualified to vote on these things.
Well, good luck with that.
You speak from experience, apparently.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Bill, appreciate your remarks.
Thank you.
Councillor Kirby Young, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, I just have one question for you, Bill, and you were asked sort of what better looked like, and you mentioned Barcelona, London, Amsterdam, I've been to all three of those cities. And yes, you're absolutely right, they have sort of distributed city and, or sorry, distributed density across the cities as a whole, but they also don't really have the single family typology in those cities. So are you suggesting, but they do have towers, and then they do have sort of that mid-density, low-rise. Barcelona's got a lot of, you know, long certain areas, it's sort of those six story buildings and, you know, more historical, or London's got a lot of row houses, for example, and multi-story. So are you suggesting that we go away from the single family?
Oh, absolutely, and thank you, councillor, and absolutely, you mentioned row housing, and that's something I've been talking about consistently for a while. We have next to no row housing, like I can only think of a couple of examples in Vancouver. I've lived in Toronto, I've lived in Ottawa, I've travelled in many places. And, you know, it's a missing piece of the density and affordable housing puzzle. Certainly, you know, the density that we have with single family, large lots, is not something that's infinitely sustainable. But at the same time, we have, you know, we've made some, the city has made some moves, for sure, to coach housing, laneway housing, et cetera, but there's much more we can do. And I don't, I think that we're going to have to do something far more pervasive and far more actually widespread than high-rise, high-red density towers along West Broadway in a couple of areas. We need to have more density all over the city, no question about that. And I think, but I think when you try and impose a model on citizens that they just do not accept, it seems to be doomed to failure.
Okay, thank you, appreciate the context.
Thank you, thank you, councillor.
Thanks, that's it for questions, thank you so much, I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Next speaker is number twenty nine, Ian Poole.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, up to five minutes please.
Great, thank you, yes, my name is Ian Poole, and I have been a resident of Fairview neighbourhood for twelve years now, and I oppose this rezoning. This evening, I am speaking to you from the perspective that you, the city council, have the ongoing responsibility to ensure that decisions are being made that benefit the citizens of Vancouver. This proposal, however, simply does not benefit the citizens of Vancouver. And that's an idea you'll hear me repeat multiple times in the short time I have to speak with you, the fact that this proposed zoning does not benefit the citizens of Vancouver. And I would like to articulate five reasons why that is the case. Number one would be the Broadway plan. In their report, city staff state that the proposed height and density of the proposal align with the Broadway plan refined directions, even though, as we know, the Broadway plan is not finished, nor has it been approved by you, the council. This demonstrates, as other speakers have said before, that the city is only paying lip service to the public through the Broadway plan consultation and choosing to ignore the input of the public. This approach of ignoring the public's input clearly does not benefit the citizens of Vancouver. My second concern is the fact that this proposal sacrifices millions of dollars. The developer has applied for a developmental cost levy waiver, saving three point three million dollars and would not have to make any financial community amenity contributions. If, as the report suggests, there will be forty nine M R P units, that potential waiver of three point three million dollars equates to approximately seventy seven thousand dollars per unit. So residents should not lose sight of the fact that this revenue that the city will not be receiving will have to be made up elsewhere, which means through our property taxes. That means increased housing costs and increased rents, which do not benefit the citizens of Vancouver. My third concern is the fact that this is not a green building. Staff claim that this is a green building, but recent analysis shows that the City of Vancouver's sustainability standards do not consider the full lifecycle greenhouse gas emissions of buildings, including construction and materials. Unfortunately, city staff remain stuck in the false narrative that bigger is better. Yet tall towers such as this have been shown to have a greater negative impact on the climate than smaller buildings do. The recommendation of this thirty nine story building simply does not align with scientific and real life evidence. Doesn't Vancouver claim to be a green city and have aspirations to continue to do so to even a greater extent? Well, if so, this building cannot be a part of Vancouver's future. Because as a significant contributor of greenhouse gas, it does not benefit the citizens of Vancouver. My fourth concern has to do with schools. This rental building is being planned for all family types, yet the report provides no details on nearby neighbourhood schools. In the report, staff cited the high-density housing for families with children guidelines as part of their justification for this project. While these guidelines stipulate that sites selected for family housing development should be within point eight kilometres walking distance of an elementary school. But Falls Creek Elementary is one point three kilometres away, and Henry Hudson Elementary is one point six kilometres away. So not only are the closest schools further away than these guidelines instruct, but these are both also operating at full capacity. So building homes for families where there are no available neighbourhood schools for their children to attend does not benefit the citizens of Vancouver. And my last concern is to do with housing affordability. Through escalating property values, the rezoning of this building will place immense pressure on the large number of older affordable rentals in the neighbourhood, worsening our housing affordability crisis. An increase in property values means increased housing costs and increased rents, which in fact undermines the proposed positive notion of this development having affordable rentals. This clearly neither does benefit the citizens of Vancouver. So who does this find benefit? Well, it seems that the proponent is the only one to benefit. And the evidence shows that it certainly does not benefit the citizens of Vancouver. And the evidence shows that it certainly does not benefit the citizens of Vancouver. As it does not benefit the citizens of Vancouver, you cannot in good conscience approve this rezoning. I oppose this rezoning, and I urge you to vote against it. Thank you.
Thanks much. You have questions from councillor Hardwick. Councillor Hardwick, please go ahead.
Thank you. I was hoping to explore in a little more depth your comments around land inflation. So basically, what you're saying is that the implicit land inflation, it'd be interesting to know, you know, back to, well, they purchased it in 2007. They've had this on the books since 2011, how much the land is already appreciated. But your comment is, unless I'm wrong, that it is, the upward land inflation as a result of this significantly large development will affect other affordable, the value of surrounding properties. And do you think that will then just lead to their demolition through speculation or just overall increase in costs across the board?
Oh, yeah, councillor Hardwick, you've nailed it on the head. And so as housing prices and concerns and property taxes go up, we're going to see housing affordability get even worse. And so despite the fact that 49 units in this building might be affordable, we're sacrificing affordability to a greater extent throughout the entire neighborhood.
A rising tide lifts all boats. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's it for questions. Appreciate you calling in tonight. And we're going to move to speaker number 30 of 68. Speaker 30 is Darlene Crips.
Speaker 30 is not on the line.
Thank you, staff. Let's mark that one there. Okay. We have, staff, sorry, clerks, are you keeping track of those who have registered but not been here to speak?
Yes, we are.
Great. Okay, thanks so much. I won't take that one on. Next is 31, Janice Hamilton.
Speaker 31 is not on the line.
Thank you. Speaker number 32 is Steve Grippo.
Can everyone hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Thanks. My name is Stephen Grippo. As you mentioned, I live in the Camby Village area. And I also work in the Mount Pleasant industrial area between me and Camby. I'm calling in tonight in support of the development at 1477 West Broadway. I'll keep this short, but I think the property is obviously at a very central location to the city, right about future public transit, on one of the busiest transit corridors in all of North America. From my understanding, it represents a great location to have a significant number of rental units, when this is greatly needed, as evidenced by our dropping vacancy rate and the struggle for many renters to find units in the city. I'd say my biggest point in favor of this proposed development is that there would be no displacement of existing residential rental tenants. I think this is going to be one of the bigger issues we see with the Broadway Plan. Although I'm in favor of the plan, there are going to be a number of displaced renters as developers build out on our old three-story walk-up buildings throughout the plant's area. I understand there's some controversy here that's been brought up by a number of callers tonight, given that the Broadway Plan has not gone to council yet. But I believe the plan has been delayed a number of times, albeit for understandable reasons with the pandemic. But I don't believe it's enough reason to continue to delay the much-needed purpose-built rental developments that the city needs. I think if this area is going to continue to grow as expected with the population projections that we see, we're going to need developments like this in well-located areas near downtown and with great transit nearby. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. Councillor Frye, up to five minutes, please, for questions.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And thanks, Speaker. You touched on something that I'm hoping the chair will indulge me exploring a little bit. And that's how you worry that the Broadway Plan may exacerbate displacement of a lot of these affordable older walk-ups.
Councillor Frye, we're really just dealing with this one building, as I explained earlier.
Yeah, and I'm getting there. I'm getting there. But I just, do you see buildings of this scale and delivering rental as sort of a lightning rod to take some of that pressure off the existing affordable rentals potentially?
Yes and no. I mean, I've looked at the Broadway Plan. I know we're not touching on that, but I support that, the plan in general. But I think we should look at, I guess, maximizing the number of units we can put in areas where it doesn't displace people. And I know a location like this did not have any residential rental tenants. It obviously will be less of an impact on them thus. And I just think if we can do that in areas like this along Broadway, that makes more sense than having to displace more tenants in the older stock that is considered to be more affordable.
Okay, that's sort of what I was digging at, and I think you've articulated that well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for calling in tonight. That is it for questions for you. We're going to go to speaker number 33 in council. I'm conscious that we've been here for now just over an hour and a half. And so I think what I'll do is go to, just go through the next three speakers, go to speaker number 35, and then take a 10-minute break. The next speaker, number 33, is Peter Walkerch.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Okay, up to five minutes, please.
Thank you. My name is Peter Walkerch, and I'm here to support these homes. We know we need more rental homes, period. And this also offers below-market rental homes. We also know we're in a climate crisis and need to encourage transit-oriented housing. This is right above a Skytrain station on Broadway, the second-largest job center in the province, minutes from downtown, the first-largest job center in the province. This is exactly the sort of housing for people who live and work in this city that we need a lot more of. It literally cannot get more transit-oriented than this. Also, it's just replacing a bank. For once, we're not building rental housing on top of older rental housing, so there's no displacement. Now, I would like to see mid-rise apartments legalized across the entire city and every single neighborhood. But there are still places where tall buildings make a lot of sense, and this is one of them. It doesn't get more central. It doesn't get more transit-oriented. Some opponents have tried to suggest that housing like this is bad for the environment. But even a perfectly carbon-neutral building is still a climate disaster if you need to drive to and from it for everything. It is misleading to look only at the embodied carbon of the building itself and not consider the transportation patterns it enables. Research has shown that people who live in compact, transit-friendly cities have much lower carbon emissions than people who live in low-density, car-dependent areas. A suburban lifestyle consumes much more carbon than a central urban one. The bottom line is letting people live like this in a compact, transit-friendly part of the urban core is one of the best ways we can fight climate change. And if you care about the climate crisis, you should view fighting sprawl as one of your main jobs. And I've got to say, this isn't some mega tower. When you look at what's going up in Burnaby and Surrey, 40 floors isn't that much. If we can't build a 40-floor building here at Broadway and Granville, of all places, we can't build one anywhere. We've heard that any more delay to this project could jeopardize the opening of the South Granville Skytrain Station, in part because the Broadway Plan is already two years late. Given the regional importance and public investment in the Broadway Skytrain, projecting this building would be exactly what the provincial government would need to prove, that local government is not taking the responsibilities seriously and to justify provincial intervention. In nearby Shaughnessy, walking in just a few minutes, mega mansions that take up more land than this power get built without any sort of public process. They pay zero or virtually zero fees to provide public amenities, no affordability component. You know, the previous evening, a councillor asked about how this building will contribute to the public realm. I didn't see that councillor. I've never seen him demanding that Shaughnessy estate owners let the public onto their laws. I don't see this council trying to impose affordability requirements on Shaughnessy Mansions or to broadly legalize low- or mid-rise apartments there. I think it's ludicrous that something like this, that so clearly responds to the actual needs of this city, needs to be approved on a case-by-case basis, taking up hours of the time of our most senior civic political leadership, all dressed up in some public consultation, which is just a contest to see whether there's more supporters of rental housing or more opponents, who can spend hours over several weekday nights waiting on the phone. You know, the city sent out over 4,000 postal notifications for this and got about 400 responses, a mix of support and opposition. Well, counting up that support versus opposition only tells a small part of the story. The main takeaway should be 90% of people don't care. By the way, a previous speaker mentioned the local neighborhood group, the Fairview South Granville Action Committee. Who are they? Their website doesn't name a single person who's behind it. I live in Fairview. I have for, I guess, about six years now, four years, five years. Anyways, a few years ago, I wrote to them to ask them how I could get involved. They never even responded. Who put these sorts of closed groups in charge of anything? How many people do they represent? How do they arrive with their views? Who says they can speak for the neighborhood? This sort of process is just not a sensible way of responding to the housing crisis, not a sensible way of responding to the climate crisis. We need to do better than this because there's urgency to the housing crisis. There's urgency to the climate crisis. Delay is not acceptable. And we've already got a lot of delay from this council. The Broadway Plan is already two years behind schedule. It's easy. Just let things stall endlessly, refuse to make a decision. A vote for your consultation easily turns into another couple of years of housing and climate inaction. What do you stand for? Please, get on with it. We need these homes. Those are my comments.
Thank you so much. I don't see any questions for you, so we'll move on to the next speaker. But thanks again for calling in tonight. We have speaker number 34, Dale McLanahan, who I believe is in-person clerks.
No, actually, I'm on the phone. Can you hear me?
You are? Okay, great. Please go ahead. Up to five minutes.
Okay, I'm speaking on behalf of Granville Island Council. We are appointed by the minister responsible for CMHC to participate in decision-making for the island and implementing the 2040 Granville Island Plan. I'm also a resident of the area, and I'll make some comments later, very quickly, regarding my personal perspective. But with regard to the Granville Island perspective, we're very supportive of this building and development. We think it's a good utilization of transit investments, which are very substantial. And we think that the scale and nature of the building will draw people to the area, increase service to the area, and most importantly, provide for alternate methods of getting on and off of Granville Island relative to car-oriented travel. So from the island's perspective, we're very supportive of this. From a personal perspective, I'm a resident at 16th and Granville, in the Hycraft Building. And what I anticipate happening when this building, if you approve it, is built out, we're going to have enhanced retail and grocery opportunities. That'll be replacing some of the smaller shops which were extant here back when I lived in this area back in the late or early 80s. And I think that'll be an addition that's positive for the neighborhood. I think that the scale and the quality of design is positive. And I think that the inclusion of purpose-built rental, including a proportion of affordable rental, is also a big positive. The, when I moved into my current home and look out at the view of English Bay, I knew that it would not last forever. And in part, as they say, pretend it's the city. And with the growth and the development opportunities along Broadway, I had always anticipated there'd be a change in the landscape. I'm happy to say that I think the Broadway Plan strikes the right balance of job and residential development that, supported by transit, is a natural. And I'm willing to trade off what inevitably will be some loss of view in exchange for the housing opportunities that will be created and a better utilization of a very substantial public investment. I'll leave it at that, but I'm willing to trade my view for a better city and a city with more and better rental housing. So I add my support to this.
Thanks so much for phoning in this evening. I don't see questions for you, so I will move to speaker number 35. We have Sebastian Lipa. Sebastian Lipa, speaker number 35.
Hi there.
Hi. Up to five minutes. Hi. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Hi there. Yeah, my name is Sebastian Lipa, and I'm calling in my capacity as the manager of planning for Granville Island. And I'm calling to offer my support to this project. This project, which will bring a lot of additional residential density to the neighborhood, I think is very much in line with our goals for Granville Island. Our long-range goal for the island is to, over time, increase the number of trips to the island while at the same time decreasing the number of trips that are made by car. And this is a, this trend has been in, we've seen this trend happen for more than 20 years of higher numbers of people visiting the island and fewer trips by car, so that's a positive. But we, but our long-term vision is to see a lot more of this. We have a lot of our land, which is currently used for surface parking. And when we did our 2040 Vision Plan and with our, and in consultation with the community, people told us they'd like to see us build on the strengths of the attractions we have on the island. And our key strategy for doing that is redeveloping those, some of the spaces that are currently used for surface parking, for future spaces for food innovation, for arts and culture, and public spaces. So this shift from car trips to other trips made by other means, walking, cycling, transit, is central to our strategy. And so having more people in the neighborhood through a project like this and the associated Broadway Plan are fully supported by staff at Granville Island. And I just would like to say and compliment your staff that have been really great about engaging our community through the process of this and the Broadway Plan. And so we understand that the rezoning before you today is in alignment in terms of the density with the directions coming to you shortly in the Broadway Plan. I'd just like to finish by mentioning that Granville Island does generate up to 2 million car trips a year. That's a lot of car traffic in this neighborhood that we think that over time could be dramatically reduced with greater density in the neighborhood, where more of those trips to the island will be made by people walking and cycling and using transit to visit the island. Thank you.
Thanks very much for your participation tonight. Councillor Weave has questions for you. Councillor Weave?
Yeah, I just have a clarifying question. Can you talk a little bit about the process of consultation that happened with your group? I'm just interested on recognizing the proximity of the planning work you're doing and this project, and just a little bit more of what that process looked like.
Yeah, we've been, we've been, our general manager has been in, has been involved in discussions on this project over the course of this project. I've, as, first, on the staff level, I've been in contact with, and we've been engaged by city staff on the Broadway Plan, who have spoken to our, spoken to tenants, spoken to staff on the project. So we've been, we've felt very, we've been up to date throughout the whole process.
Okay, and part of that's on how we could create better walking paths from this project to Granville Island is one of the options. Is that kind of some of the dialogue?
On, so for this project, we have been discussing the potential for, if there's any opportunity to make sure that, on the transit side, so that transit station users are aware of the proximity of Granville Island. And that's something that we are very keenly interested in and appreciate that recognition. the, uh, that recognition that, uh, this would be an important aspect of the project.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, that's it for questions. Uh, thank you very much for phoning in this evening. Okay, counsel, we're at, uh, ten minutes to eight, so let's, uh, take ten minutes and come back at eight o'clock. Thanks much. Uh, clerks, I'm gonna start now, so, um, we have speaker number thirty-six up next, Jack Habbert. Jack Habbert, speaker number thirty-six.
Uh, yes, I'm here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counselors. Uh, I assume you can hear me?
I can. Please go ahead.
My name is Jack Habbert, and I live in Fairview. Uh, unfortunately, I oppose the, uh, CD one rezoning for fourteen seventy-seven West Broadway. Um, I appreciate, Mr. Mayor, that you have requested we focus on the building as opposed to the Broadway Plan. But I have to say, it's impossible to consider, uh, fourteen seventy-seven without thinking of it in the context of the Broadway Plan. And certainly, if, as many people have suggested, uh, we want a lower-rise future, then approving this building, uh, in advance of the plan means that we may well have a second Fairview folly, as, uh, one of the earlier speakers said. I've been listening with quite interest to the, uh, the people who support the plan. And what I hear when I listen to them is that some people like the specifics of the building, for example, the grocery store. Uh, but primarily, what I'm hearing is that people want more dwellings. And a number of people have quoted the, uh, two hundred and twenty-three, uh, marketing units and forty-nine, um, moderate income units. That sounds significant, but I've been reading, uh, Brian Palmquist's, um, blogs or emails, and it appears that we currently have about a hundred and twenty thousand dwellings, uh, identified to the city, uh, in some form of progress. So if we think about it in that context, the two twenty-three or the two, or the forty-nine are not that big a number. In fact, they don't move the needle. The second point is that, as many speakers have said, uh, the building itself is an inappropriate building form, uh, from the perspective of climate change, from the perspective of livability, and probably from the, um, perspective of the cost of the units. Um, and if we think, and, and so a lot of people, myself included, would like to see more of a mid-rise, low-rise, mid-rise future for, uh, the whole Broadway area. And it seems to me we have plenty of, um, room to meet our future population needs. Uh, if you look at the Broadway Plan as it was sent out, and you look at the, um, the, I'll call it loosely zoning, the, uh, building densities that were laid out there, it looks like there is actually, uh, not room for thirty-seven dollars, which is what the plan says, but in fact, more like a hundred, a hundred thousand, uh, additional dwellings, um, far more than any reasonable forecast, uh, that I can come up with. Um, so it seems to me that we have plenty of room to actually have a low-rise development that would meet, um, our foreseeable population requirements. Uh, one of the other issues, I think, that shows up in people's minds about the, uh, high-rises is that seems to be the only approach the city has taken so far to coming up with some affordable housing. And I'd like to point out that other areas in North America, such as, uh, Cambridge, Massachusetts, and, uh, Berkeley, California, are in fact working with the idea of, uh, density that approves buildings only for affordable houses. And when you look at some of their models, and even some modeling that was done for the Broadway area, what you see are very attractive, um, reasonably-sized buildings, or reasonably-sized suites and buildings that are in generally the six-story wood-frame, um, context, if you like. Uh, and it seems to me that we really need to be looking at those kind of options as well, and, uh, not just lock ourselves into this high-rise future. Now, going back specifically to fourteen seventy-seven, um, on Thursday, Counselor Carr raised the issue, um, that it was possible to complete fourteen seventy-seven within the existing zoning or within the, um, um, the original, uh, plan, which I believe was six stories. And then, at some point in the future, uh, if the zoning is changed or the Broadway Plan is approved, the building could then be extended. Um, I believe it's the only, the only responsible, uh, approach that the council can take at this point is to not approve this rezoning and set it aside until the, uh, Broadway Plan has been completed.
Thanks so much. You are... Yeah, and Counselor Hardwick has questions for you. Counselor Hardwick?
Thank you. I, I, I'm gonna go back to my first question last, but, uh, on your closing remarks there is, it, your point is, uh, about the cart and the horse.
Yes. Uh, yeah. Was, was that a statement or a question?
Uh, it was a, it, I was just confirming that that's what you were saying.
Uh, yeah, uh, yeah, definitely. Um, I think without that larger context, a thirty-nine-story building makes no sense.
Thank you. So, um, the other point I, I wanted to ask you about was your comment about the population growth forecasts. Um, I, you know, noted this personally through my research for some time, and what I'm trying to wrap my head around, and maybe you can add some color to this, is why we are promoting growth in excess of, of pace of change growth forecast. Do you have a sense of that?
Uh, well, I, I can give you some context. I went to one of the initial, uh, workshops for the Broadway Plan, and I asked city staff what the target was for, um, um, the population. The answer was, we don't have a target. And that got me really kind of curious, so I started doing some digging myself. And I went to Stats Can, and as you know, it shows Vancouver growth rate at about one percent a year over the last twenty years. If you apply that to the Broadway Plan, this is about eight hundred people and five hundred dwellings a year. And I then went to the, uh, BC government website, which has more granular data, so instead of just looking at Vancouver as a whole, you can look at the individual areas. And this is the data that the province uses for planning things like health services. Their forecast, uh, for our area was about one point three percent a year, which is about a thousand people and seven hundred dwellings. So you've gone from eight hundred people to a thousand people and five hundred dwellings to seven hundred dwellings. Then the Broadway Plan came out with even higher numbers, about seventeen hundred people and a thousand dwellings a year. So this is twice the historic growth rate and about forty percent higher than the BC planning data. But then, when I looked at Brian, uh, Palmquist's, uh, email, and you saw that potential for over a hundred thousand new dwellings, that's over three times the stated plan, and that makes no sense to me. Uh, 'cause that, that far exceeds, um, anything that I've seen a forecast for. Because that far exceeds anything that I've seen a forecast for.
Right, so the difference between incremental growth with a margin of error, a reasonable marginal versus exponential, like double, double projections.
Or triple or more.
Why would we do that?
Councillor Hardwick, we're just going to try to steer you back to this building.
Well, it is existential after all. Well, I think I'll just park it there, but I appreciate your comments very much.
Thank you. That is it for questions for each day speaker. Thank you so much for participating tonight. We have speaker number thirty-seven is Cyrus Bolman.
Thank you. I'm a middle-aged renter of seven years in Fairview, living in a mid-rise building. I barely found the notification of this rezoning. I'm a neurologist who works with families with children with neuropsychiatric disorders and intellectual disability. I oppose this high-rise tower because its height comes at a cost to mental health and child and family development without improving community or personal safety. This tower rezoning proposes a minimal number of undersized family units and adds no further community amenities than the original design, which already includes the coveted grocery store. And none are being planned within walking distance. A mixture with mid-rise buildings, including at this site, could achieve the same housing unit goals and support a healthy, livable community. However, my strongest opposition to this rezoning application is that it's unjustified in its timing demands, and if passed, would establish that there are two sets of rules for development in Vancouver. And it would curtail a meaningful conclusion to the Broadway plan process, undermining confidence in public consultation, established laws, and meaningful debate for which I am entitled as a citizen and am paying for as a taxpayer. As Mayor Stewart stated at the end of the last session, I asked council to quote, "maintain the integrity of the process." Here, a single developer chose to delay submitting a dramatically different development for a number of years because they were unsure of the city's plan, and would prefer now to bypass the public process at the last minute. Now, to partially quote the city planners' report, "If council approves the recommendations, staff will work to ensure the heightened density are compatible with the policy directions of Broadway and Granville station area in the plan." The plan. Well, I'm sorry, but as far as I see on the public record, the elected mayor and council have not voted on approving any plan. Thus, current zoning takes precedence over staff-selected emerging directions. Regarding these emerging directions related to this building, staff have acknowledged that the proposed unprecedented building heights in their proposed Broadway plan are a concern to us, the public. Thus, council must acknowledge that there remains significant public debate to come. The Broadway plan remains a controversial one. Yes, I'm for increased density, but how dense? How tall? How evenly spread? How and will it be supported? The devil is in the details. A previous speaker showed us the potential consequences of opening floodgates. Accepting this rezoning, the tallest height proposed in that draft plan renders the entire Broadway plan consultation moot. Council will have made the decision disregarding the public, making the expensive consultation process a waste of taxpayers' money, a farce, and a statement that, in the city of Vancouver, rules don't apply. This application raises another question. Do other developers, homeowners and landowners who wait years for approval get this same special treatment? There's no particularly special need for this building to be built, a similar building to be built next door or half a block away along a timeframe that respects the public process. If council later approves a plan with a forty-story policy around stations, there are many other nearby properties that can be developed to this height instead. Because we can all agree that it's not going to be every single building that is going to be this side, one after another. Why should another landowner be denied this same privilege? There's nothing particularly important about being on top of the station. The residential building does not enter into the station any more than a neighboring building. Most of the city's nearby stations are one-story tall, and one expects will be surrounded by taller buildings. Indeed, more tall buildings can surround a low-rise station than a high-rise one. Now, the argument to complete construction at this site in one phase is not compelling enough to delegitimize the public consultation and create two sets of rules. The quote "potential access and circulation challenges" commented on by city staff are minimal. Lisa Gao, the executive project director of the Broadway subway plan, stated in their submission, "The only customer service impact of phased construction would be a longer presence of protective hoarding around the site that may temporarily relocate bus stops." The inconvenience, staff wrote, would be an additional six months. It will not delay the station opening. These bus stops are already relocated. We transit riders are already used to the change. As my time is probably nearly up, let me summarize my views. High-rise buildings preclude the development of healthier communities with more sustainable mixed-low and mid-rise buildings, where public amenities are not an unfunded afterthought. The developer here chose to not consider any residential building options other than an unprecedented high-rise building despite many years of planning available. The rezoning offers no additional community amenities beyond the approved building. The rezoning would render moot any further debate around the controversial height and density aspects of the Broadway plan. The developer and city staff have not presented a compelling reason to disregard the integrity of the Broadway plan process.
Thanks so much.
Being over top of a station is not a compelling reason to undermine due process, create double standards, and undermine public confidence in government.
I'm just going to stop you there, but you. See, I'm just going to stop you there, but you do have questions from councillor Hardwick.
Wow, thank you very much. Would you kindly share your statements with council via email?
I would be happy to do that.
Thank you very much. I'd really appreciate that. You're looking at all of this through the lens of a medical doctor. Right?
Yes, looking at a medical doctor focused on families and child development.
Okay, so that's really coloring your perspective, and yet you're concerned about delegitimizing the public process. How do those things intersect with this particular development proposal?
Well, specific to this development, the high-rise component of it has so few, so few real livable-sized family apartments that it really propagates a problem of families not being able to live in the city. You know, most of the apartments are one-bedroom or studio, which is not what families live in. And as we heard from other speakers, you know, beyond four hundred meters, you're taking a car. No family with two kids is going to be, you know, walking one-point-three kilometers every day to get their kid to school. Also, kids need, you know, green environments, public plazas to thrive, especially when we discovered in COVID where you need to stay away from each other. And children's mental health, let alone families' mental health, has significantly been challenged by that. With regards to the process, you know, we see in a public process that there are rules. And we believe in our society, and our society functions by having rules, and we must follow those. And the delays that would be, that would occur by waiting for the Broadway plan to happen are not significant. And there's no equal treatment to other landowners in the area by bypassing those rules.
So is this a?
I'll leave it at that.
So is this a cart before the horse argument with the plan generally? But then, do you still have confidence in the overall plan process? What's the sequencing that you see?
Well, I believe this is certainly the cart before the horse. And in terms of the Broadway plan, so for this process, I was shocked with how difficult it was to figure out what was going on with this building as opposed to other tall buildings, for example, on Birch that were debated in the recent past. And that probably shows that, if I remember correctly, there were, you know, hundreds of speakers for that Birch building, but only seventy for this building. I would note that all the notifications were hidden under hoarding of the building plate. With the Broadway planning process, I'm disappointed that only one option is presented, and people were offered complicated ways of commenting on it. And it was quite difficult, to be honest, to answer the Broadway plan process. There were so many sheets, so many screens and tick boxes to go through.
Well, maybe as we're coming out of the pandemic, we could take a breather and have enough time to focus on it properly. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments very much.
Thank you.
Councillor, we have questions up to five minutes.
Yeah. Really interested in one of your perspectives, and that is, do you think we should be taking a health and wellbeing lens to kind of every decision? So when we have a project like this, there should be notes provided to council on kind of how this building will ensure the health and wellbeing of the residents inside and the livability of the region? Is that, or the area, is that something you think that we should be really taking account in our decision-making?
The speaker seems to have disconnected, so we'll try to get them back online.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Clerks, I'm going to move on to the next speaker. And just let me know if you get speaker thirty-seven back on the line. We have speaker number thirty-eight, Rakshada Engineer.
Yes. Hello, and thank you for your valuable time and attention. Today, I'm going to speak to you more as a passionate, proud Vancouverite born and raised, rather than on the logistics. As I only recently learned about this project, much to my dismay, I am totally opposed to the rezoning of one-four-seven-seven Broadway, which I regard as a monstrosity and a eyesore. And on this point, I want to raise something that I don't hear a lot of. And I certainly know that area well, because I was raised, born and raised in Vancouver. I remember the old iconic aristocrat, and I spent decades literally in that area, and I grew up on Granville Street. In the nineteen nineties, I was a tour guide. I met people from all over the world. And a constant thing which we all know and love about Vancouver was the fact that we have the mountain view. It matters. Aesthetics matters. You drive down Granville Street, coming from the airport or just coming from southbound, and you see the beautiful mountains framed in front of you, not with the eyesore thumbtack in the middle. You do the same down Camby until recently, right near Queen Elizabeth Park, and it was part of the commons for all Vancouverites. You shouldn't have to go to Prospect Point for a beautiful view. You shouldn't have to go to the top of Queen Elizabeth Park or be a tourist for these views. This is part of what makes Vancouver livable and enjoyable for all of us. So talking about aesthetics and beauty and the mountain view is not frivolous. It is fundamental to what makes Vancouver a beautiful and desirable place to live. Now, today, if you go down Camby, that's blighted. Even though they put up low-rises, no one thought about what happens when you steal that beautiful view with the Queen Elizabeth Park, the boulevard going down. You can't see the mountains anymore. Instead, you have absolute development with no character at all that totally invaded that area. Now, this is not to say I'm against low-rise development or I'm against densification. As other speakers have alluded to, it's not a question of densification versus none. It's about doing it smart. And here, we're speaking about thirty-nine stories. Has anyone really fathomed thirty-nine stories? That's overkill. That's mega overkill. You know, I've heard people say, well, you know, where you have the transportation hubs, you need to have, you know, mass development. Well, you can't have a cookie-cutter approach. Each part of the city and greater Vancouver is different. Granville and Broadway is not the same as other areas, and those areas have suffered. We can't just have this approach that wherever there's a transportation hub, suddenly we have to have a huge development because somehow that solves our problems. Many other speakers have talked about, you know, the problems that come with high densification. What about, what does this lead for as a cascade into the future if we have a huge surge of population? Well, that requires more supplies. Has anyone talked about trucks coming into the city? Trucks produce a lot of very nasty pollution. Trucks cannot take subways. You need trucks to supply an ever-denser population when it's that concentrated. What about infrastructure? Extensive and expanding new sewer and water lines in a thirty-nine-story building? What sort of stress does that put on the city's resources? You know, I'm not an expert in these things, and many people who've spoken are, but that, to me, is just common sense. You cannot go that high without serious consequences. So to sum up, blighting out views, and I don't care if it's skinnier or not, it just ruins the view. Matters. High-rises are not family-friendly, as the previous speaker alluded to. And I have dealt with children my whole life, and I know the impacts of having children not raised in areas where they can access playgrounds and grassy areas and whatnot. Low-rises are much more conducive, not only to more beautiful views and sunshine, but also to community. You're far more likely to know your neighbors in a three, four, five-story building than you are in a thirty-nine-story building. And I want to just end by alluding to, and I learned a lot because I knew to all of this, I just learned about this horrible monstrosity, what Sean talked about. You know, I was very disturbed about the skewing of public input, what apparently is that, and the questionable legitimacy and transparency of this process. Another speaker, Paul, again, went into detail how mega-high-rises are not eco-friendly. They're not eco-friendly. And then there's the undermining of neighborhoods.
Thank you, Speaker. You have five minutes, so I do want to thank you for calling in this evening. And there are no questions for you, so I'm going to move to the next speaker. So thanks, thanks again for calling in tonight. Councillor, we view it questions for speaker number thirty-seven, and he is back on the line if you wanted to ask your questions.
Yeah, I was really interested in your input on recognizing that we should be looking at health and safety outcomes on projects like this, on not just people in the building, but the livability of the area. Can you talk a little bit about how we could and how important it is for us to make decisions as council utilizing health and wellbeing through every project and every kind of plan?
Speaker?
You know, I won't pretend to be an epidemiologist or a public health expert, but certainly being in a safe environment where children can go out and play, where they can interact, where they can interact with their neighbors, other children, where parents can, you know, focus on what they need to focus on in their lives and not worry about what their kid is doing is really important. You know, there's no mention of any extra daycare spots. There's no playground mentioned for this building. And, you know, I think that's all very, all very important. You know, there was a mention of a shaded park behind the Vancouver School boarding building. You know, the availability of doctors' offices, pediatricians' offices, and schools is really important. You know, I think it is beneficial that, you know, Granville Island is, you know, down the road. But again, it's not a walkable distance for any family from Broadway. And so having spaces really close is what matters, because those are the ones that get used.
So to better understand the context of what's around when we're voting on housing. Hey, appreciate those comments. Thank you.
Thanks for having me back on.
Thanks for answering. That's it, councillor. I just wanted to remind speakers that if you've missed your turn, there will be time at the end. I will call three times for speakers to come on, whether you're, we were on the list or not. So there is ample time at the end if we missed you. Just wanted you to know that. And I'm just going to read out the number for folks that are listening. One-eight-three-three-three-five-three-eight-six-one-zero, code one-oh-six-one-four-four-five-pound. One-eight-three-three-three-five-three-eight-six-one-zero, code one-oh-six-one-four-four-five-pound. And that, all that information is on Twitter, at Van City Clerk. Okay, council, we're going to move to the next speaker, who's John Donovan, speaker number thirty-nine. Clerks, we have John Donovan, speaker number thirty-nine on the phone.
Yes, speaker thirty-nine is on the line. We'll just try again, just one moment.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
I'm ready to roll. Mr. Mayor, councillors, my name is John Donovan. My wife and I live a half-block west of Granville on Twelfth Avenue. We are firmly opposed to this development application. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to tell you why. We're opposed to this development because, well, for various reasons, but they all come down to this. The building proposed is too big for the area. I understand that it makes sense to explore development along the subway line, but this is much too much, way too much. It's way too high, and there's far too much density in there. We don't need to cram all of that number of people and all of that height into one building at this juncture. There's three specific points I wish to make. First is, and you've heard this one before. First is, and you've heard this one before, this application is premature. The city's been working on the overall plan for the Broadway subway corridor for years. Uh, I recently completed a survey of, of the options that they were proposing. And, uh, and I responded that I was very concerned about a number of things that were being proposed. Uh, I haven't had a response to that. I know my ne-neighbors and, uh, other people have the same view as I. And, and so I'm waiting to see what the plans want to say. But I failed to see how we could have a development application of this magnitude go ahead at this time in this city without a plan being in place. The planning process has been going on for years and to proceed without it is just, just to make a mockery of the whole planning process and of the public input. Um, I note that developers' desires to proceed, uh, are really for his own convenience. Uh, there's no substantive reason why they can't complete the least required level to, uh, have the subway station and table the rest. Uh, in addition, um, I learned last week at the hearings that, uh, there are many new rental properties coming on stream. Surely these should be built and absorbed into the system before we go around building, buildings like the one proposed. My second point is the, this application ignores the lack of infrastructure in the area to support the people who are going to live there. Uh, there's no adequate parks, schools, or other amenities to support the sudden infusion of residents that this development would bring. Granville, the nearest park, is tiny and is half a kilometer away. The city's high-density, uh, housing for families with children guidelines stipulate that sites selected for family housing development should be within point-eight kilometers walking distance of an elementary school. And as already been pointed out, the nearest school, uh, which is, now wait one, is Falls Creek Elementary, is one-point-three kilometers away. And the next one, Henry Hudson, is one-point-six kilometers away. And that's twice the maximum recommended by the city's own guidelines. Where are these kids gonna go to school? I, I don't know. These schools are, are at or near full, uh, capacity. And I find it insulting that the developer has, has applied for a waiver of the development cost levy. Uh, this would relieve him of the obligation of contributing some three-point-three million to defray the cost of providing these amenities. And the money ultimately, if this plan goes ahead, is gonna come out of my pocket as a taxpayer. Third, the application does not adequately address the effect it will have on our community. We appreciate that all things change. Uh, some development along the Broadway line is inevitable, but this outlandish proposal is, as I said at the outset, too much. My wife and I retired to our present residence in West Twelfth, about two years ago. We had no interest in moving downtown or to the West End. We do not want to live in a place like that. We like our present community. We like being able to see the North Shore Mountains. We do not want to live in any downtown. As I said, this application, if allowed, will set a serious precedent for the development of the whole Broadway area and the Broadway plan. On April eleventh, last Monday, uh, Dan Fumano wrote in the Vancouver Sun that to many residents of our area, quote, "It may come as an unwelcome news to in," sorry, that in the view of the city hall's planning department, downtown is coming to them. I can tell you, it's certainly unwelcome news to my wife and I. We do not want this. Our neighbors do not want this. There, that there is a zoning application for this being heard now is extremely disappointing to us. There's no place in our communities for buildings like this one. Uh, unfortunately, it's not, pardon me, I got that backwards. Fortunately, it is not the planning committee who decides whether downtown will come to favor you. So example, it's your decision. You are our elected representatives. I strongly urge you to reject this application. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Um, I don't see any questions for you, so I just want to thank you for participating, and we'll move to the next speaker. Uh, we have next, uh, Roberta Olenek, Speaker number forty. Hi, clerks. Um, hanging time.
Yes, Speaker forty is on the line.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Speaker number forty, uh, Roberta Olenek.
Can you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Hey, I live in Vancouver and, hello?
Oh, hi, you might have your computer on?
Oh, yeah, okay, hang on one second, let me, uh, let me get rid of that.
No problem.
Oh, sorry. Hey, yeah. All right. I live in Vancouver and I oppose the massive tower proposed for fourteen-seventy-seven West Broadway. This is yet another one of those MERP spot rezonings that sow contention wherever they go. MERP continually insists on building structures local residents hate because they're excessive in size and density and give too many free gifts to developers in exchange for a paltry number of not even really so-called affordable units that are generally so tiny as to be barely livable. The report on this proposal states its heightened density aligns with the Broadway plan. As many have noted, how can that even be considered justification for this project given that the Broadway plan is not approved? Yet another example of this council putting the cart before the horse. That the developer can switch midstream from an improved low-rise development to a proposed skyscraper doesn't pass the sm- smell test. The tower would be ridiculously high, creating major shadowing issues. The existing shadow studies, as many have noted, fail to assess shadows at winter solstice, when it's the darkest time of the year, and the shadows shown are at the wrong angle. This kind of oversight and sloppiness is unacceptable. Stop trying to pull the wool over our eyes by neglecting to provide the whole truth. Shadow studies have been inadequate and misleading on other previous projects supported by council. Some who support this project say their right to housing supersedes the need for sunlight and views for the rest of us. I don't think these two need to be mutually exclusive, as housing does not have to be in towers. Blocking light and views of Vancouver's stunning setting diminishes the livability of this city for absolutely everyone who lives here or even just visits. The woman who spoke a couple of speakers ago about the importance of aesthetics and beauty could not have said it better. That views do matter. The developer will be exempt from CACs and is applied for DCL waiver. That will force already overburden taxpayers to make up those lost millions in revenue. The report provides no details about the parks and schools needed to support this large-scale development. One of the few green spaces, Burchard Slopes Park, will fall under the shadow of fourteen-seventy-seven. Nearby schools are full. Towers above subways on busy streets lacking amenities for families are not the type of housing Vancouver needs. We need ground-level affordable housing and low-rise structures, not more and more of these hideous towers than make the city a horrible place to live. As a previous speaker who is a doctor working with family and children's health said, healthy kids need nature and green space. It is well documented that kids who do not have contact with the natural world suffer from nature deficit disorder. Symptoms of this include diminished use of the senses, attention deficit disorder, obesity, and higher rates of emotional and physical illness. And without connection to nature, kids lose that innate affinity with and concern for nature, animals, and the environment. People protect what they love and they love what they know and understand. I worry that kids raised in the new concrete jungle that Vancouver is becoming will not know and love nature and the environment and thus will not strive to protect it. Vancouver, with its views and easy connection with nature, spawned Greenpeace and many other green initiatives. What will a tower infested Vancouver spawn? In addition, these ta- concrete and glass towers are not green. Building them sets us back from our climate change goals. So I don't understand why this council keeps pushing them on us. Low-to-mid-rise buildings have much less greenhouse gas emissions than high rises. This development and the precedent it sets will lead to landlift, increasing unaffordability, leading to potential demolition of the low-rise affordable rentals in the neighborhood. And as usual, the city's engagement process is flawed and designed to manufacture consent. I wonder in this case, how many of those who have participated in the engagement process actually live in the area or even in Vancouver? Decisions like this should reflect what Vancouverites want. I sent council an email on April fifth with, uh, details on what I consider to be some major flaws in the whole way the city conducts its surveys and other engagement processes, and I refer you to that. I know I've not said anything here you've not already heard from very many others. I just hope you will actually listen this time and vote no on fourteen-seventy-seven West Broadway.
Thanks so much. Uh, that is it for, uh, I don't see any questions for you. So thank you very much for calling in tonight, and I am gonna go to the next speaker. Uh, we have Speaker number forty-one, Colin McGrath.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi there.
Hi, up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Yep, great, thanks, uh, Mayor and Council for the opportunity to speak. I am a resident in Vancouver. I am, uh, calling in, in opposition to this rezoning. I, uh, I actually like to think that I'm actually well-tuned in what's going on in the city and city council matters. I've spoken at council before. Uh, this one actually was, uh, something that I only came to know a couple of weeks ago, to be, be frank. And so that does speak to what I think a lot of other folks have said on the call here. Um, in the time that I've sort of looked into this, I really feel that, I know that there's, there's comments saying keep the plan separate from the building. But I mean, the only reason the building is being proposed as it is is largely because of the plan and preempting the plan. And I would say that preempting the plan, I really called the council to say that by doing that and voting in favor of this, it, you know, it really does question, call into question council and also the plan itself. The plan was a process. It's taken a long time. I know people might be frustrated, but it's nearly there. And, and this developer took it upon themselves to commence their building work. And, um, and I heard some other things about some questionable baiting and switching on six to thirty-nine and all those sorts of things. But I think that that risk was taken, and I think that, I had a personal experience with the city, uh, trying to preempt, uh, the, the securing six-story, uh, rentals along, uh, that passed in December when I was trying to, um, work on a small-scale, uh, project for ourselves to build a rental suite in our home based around some of the things that would be allowed in that. That actually did get approved in December when I was asking earlier in the year, city planners said, well, you can't preempt the plan based on a plan that has not yet been approved. Like that was lit, that's not city policy to do that yet. So I was not allowed to do that or even be considered for anything else. Yet here we are with, you know, what looks like a separate set of rules for different developers. I call that into question as well. And I've listened to a lot of folks in favor of this, um, and that they call out for more affordable housing. And those, again, certain those experts who spoke about all of those things around, uh, uh, the lack of consultation, transparency, it not being a green building. I would say that, that those who are saying we need more housing and more affordability, I would suggest this building does not represent affordability. I think the amount of, uh, building that is affordable, the amount of suites that are affordable in this building is small, a small amount of floor space in near-unlivable sort of situations for those who would live there. And I think that if we were to, um, effectively say, let's not talk about the plan and talk about the building, which is hard to do, but if we were just to look at this building, I would say that this doesn't meet the, the test for the concessions that have been given away for this building in terms of the density and height in exchange for that small an amount of affordable housing, I would suggest that would not, that should not pass. And when I just heard on this call tonight that there's exemptions on the CACs and the DCL waivers, that even astounds me even more. So I would ask for council to look at that in the spirit of, uh, uh, credibility for the Broadway plan, uh, alignment to one rule for all in this city. And, um, and actually, everything else everyone said about the, the infrastructure that's available to support a building this size and the fact that it actually could be built um, as it was already approved and then built upon later, which I just also heard this session tonight, makes me even more resolved to say that should be where this developer has to look at, um, as their option moving forward and not to expect that this pass passes a rezoning. So, um, I asked, thank council for the time I asked them to listen to what all the folks are saying here and, and consider, uh, that in your vote tonight to oppose this. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, Counselor Hardwick has questions for you.
To recurring themes, cart before horse, delegitimize public process. So why, why would, having listened to all this, why do you think we're doing this? What do you think the motivation is?
Well, I think, I mean, there's, well, I think it feels like the, the, to use the term, the fix is already in on the Broadway plan, so people are like, let's just move on forward. And there's a will to see that happen. I think there's always money in question and the ability to make profits. And I think there's a lot of people saying we need more housing and they genuinely, and they're not wrong, but, um, but it's just the right type of housing. I don't think we get down to that level of consideration. So I, I think this is driven largely by a developer economic agenda, and that's it. I, I, nothing more. I think that most of these units will be sold, not for affordable housing, but for luxury housing. Uh, and I just don't think that's why we should approve a rezoning like this.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. That's it for questions. We'll move on to the next speaker. Thanks much for calling in. Uh, the next is Speaker forty-two, Bobo Irich.
Yeah, that's me.
Hi, up to five minutes, please.
Hi, thanks, Mayor and Council. Thank you for hearing, uh, from me about fourteen-seventy-seven West Broadway. Uh, I'm a Vancouver resident and I have been for a decade. Um, a bit of an aside, I think it's really just, uh, I think it's wrong to ask speakers where they're from. I know council wants to hear from residents, but it has the effect of disenfranchising folks who may not live in Vancouver but who work here and would like to live here but can't because we haven't built enough housing and housing has become unaffordable. Um, so that's just a little bit of an aside. And, you know, we've consistently underestimated the number of people who want to live in the city, and we haven't built enough housing for even that underestimate. So on that note, I'm speaking in favor of the proposed redevelopment at fourteen-seventy-seven West Broadway and the two-hundred-and-twenty-three homes that are gonna come along with it. And, and I want to be a voice for the people who will get to live there. Um, I wanted to thank, uh, the councilors who on March first voted in favor of moving ahead with the public hearing. I think council would have erred in, uh, referring this proposal back to staff to wait for the Broadway plan. Um, and I think the draft release of the Vancouver plan shows us why. Um, ever so often in our public hearings, we've seen, we've heard arguments of people opposing specific developments or rezonings on the basis that, you know, it's gonna, it's preempting what's happening in a citywide plan. But three and a half years later, we still only have a draft that's years away from any specific rezoning and, and land use changes to actually address the problems in the city. So if, if, if you had voted to wait on this proposal, we would still be waiting until after the, the Broadway plan would have come up for a vote. And even then, you know, there's no guarantee that that's gonna pass. And even if that passes, there's no guarantee that this project would then come forward again in, in this specific, uh, configuration that provides much-needed homes for the area. So, um, I, I really think that, uh, we should be, you know, when we're looking at this specific building, we should be looking at, do we need more rental homes? And the answer is very clearly yes. Um, you know, the point, when we want to be building this, the subway station is currently under construction. Uh, and we want, do we want to have more delays? Do we want to have a construction process that happens in two separate phases? I think that's both financially and, like, it's financially irresponsible and, and would represent, um, sort of an irresponsible approach of, from governing to, yeah, to overlook those sort of financial considerations and, and the impact that's gonna have on, on delaying homes that people need in Vancouver. So thank you for hearing from me, and I do hope that you approve this development.
Thank you so much. Uh, I don't see any questions for you, so I will move to the next speaker, who is Danielle Leslie Brown, Speaker number forty-three.
Hello?
Hi there, you have up to five minutes, uh, whenever you're ready.
Okay, great. Um, well, my name is Taylor and I'm twenty-four, and I'm speaking on behalf of my sister Danielle and both of, both of us. So, no, that's no problem.
Uh, yeah, we're not supposed to, uh, do that. Is your sister available to speak?
Hmm, no, she just registered for me because I couldn't at the time. That, that's simply it. But she agrees with everything I'm saying.
If council, uh, will allow it, we can go ahead with the speaker. Anybody object to this? I don't hear anybody objecting, so please, uh, continue.
Okay, wonderful. So I'm speaking, um, we, as residents within the Fairview community. Um, so I believe this application is quite a special case because it signifies the precipice for so much worse. Uh, deliberate gentrification and displacement through the unapproved Broadway and Vancouver plans. So in that context, I'm speaking as a resident in one of the many buildings which are designated to be demolished in favor of unaffordable high-rise housing as part of the proposed future metro core of the city. Therefore, if both plans are approved, my sister and I will inevitably become homeless and we will not be able to afford these new rental rates, even as they're considered below market value. So I would just like to stress how extremely consequential your positions are on this board. Um, I'm unaware. Um, I'm unaware if any of you have ever been at risk of becoming homeless through gentrification during your life, but I can share that it is not instantaneous. Instead, it begins with projects like this, which is predicated on the fallacy that the city must choose between the measly amount of units that profit-driven developers are willing to spare or having no units at all, when there is of course the option to build housing that prioritizes citizens over money. That is why I believe this rezoning application should be rejected, but the applicant should be more than welcome to reapply for rezoning when, when adjustments are made in order to ensure that no future displacement occurs through incremental gentrification. And that's by providing more below-market units and reducing those rental rates to prices that are realistically affordable for the working class, not just simply below market value. Uh, I believe if the city government truly cares about providing affordable housing options for the working-class majority in a time where the housing crisis seems to have no end in sight, you would not be actively eliminating one of the few remaining communities with affordable housing already existing within it, but rather preserving it as such. And that is almost impossible by adding a thirty-nine-story luxury apartment building. And I fear as the crisis of homelessness continues to grow alongside each new applicant's profit margins, that by approving this project along with other future projects outlined within the socially and environmentally disastrous Vancouver Plan, it's only a matter of time until this city is inhabited slowly by the housed richest of the rich and the houseless poorest of the poor, with the working class pushed further into poverty through direct government policies. Words are cheap, actions to combat the crises you must address are not. That is why I believe it is your civic duty to vote no on this rezoning application. Failing to do so only cements the worst future for this community as well as the city of Vancouver and we will not be able to forget that when it is election season in October. Thank you for your time.
We do have a question from councillor Swanson, councillor Swanson, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for coming in. Um, I'm speaking here as someone who was actually gentrified out of the Fairview slopes after having lived there for nine years. This was in the early eighties when it was rezoned for condos. So I'm interested in what you think the process is by which you could be gentrified out of your home if this goes ahead.
Uh, and just a reminder that we are speaking directly to this building tonight. Um, so if you could keep your comments out to this building, that would be great.
Of course. So this project alone will not displace anyone currently, but I think we can both agree that if it is approved, it's only months until another site is upper rezoning down the street. And this trend to, this trend continues to grow in search of profits through unsustainable economic growth.
Okay, thanks. Um, and how would you, what would you do if you were in charge here to get more housing that really is affordable?
Yeah, um, I mean, I believe that there is the idea of nonprofit housing that should be explored much more thoroughly, especially in a time where a crisis has been continuing for decades with lack of affordable housing for the working class. And I believe that densification is not an issue as long as it's done organically and at scale to the already existing neighborhood, not by increasing it threefold to thirty-nine stories.
Okay, thank you dear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for questions and I'm going to move to the next speaker, thanks again so much. Next speaker is number forty-four Margaret Robinson.
Speaker forty-four is not on the line.
Thanks, and we have speaker number forty-five who I believe who's on the line, uh, Mary Masati.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can, up to, uh, five minutes please.
Uh, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and Council for allowing me to speak. I wanted to add my voice, um, in opposition tonight as somebody that lives just across and down the street from the proposed site. I wanted to, you know, thank first of all, all of my neighbors for speaking so eloquently with so much excellent information um, on all of the negative impacts that a tower this size, um, would impart, not only the, you know, social and health, but the environmental, um, and economic impacts, not to mention, uh, you know, the problems that many people have raised with regard to the consultation, um, the rushed process of this entire building. For a bit of context, I lived and rented in downtown Vancouver for almost ten years, uh, using public transit every day. So I understand, you know, the need for affordable rental housing and, um, I'm actually very excited to see the, you know, the transit that's putting, being put in on Broadway and I understand the need for increased densification. However, I, the, a building this size is simply just too tall and I don't think that, uh, you know, for this community, that is the best way forward. My husband and I, you know, have luckily been able to move to this area and the things that drew us here were the low and mid-rise buildings and the livability and community feel. And I would hate to see that get taken away, cause it, you know, a building this size is one thing in terms of, you know, obstructing the views and, you know, creating shade and robbing us of our sunshine, but it wouldn't just be this building. Um, and I think in terms of, you know, the long-term goals for this area that there are, as raised by many other speakers, there are different ways to do that to achieve the same goals. Um, I'm particularly worried about the lack of community resources with such an increase in density and population. I'm pregnant with my first child and I, I simply don't know where they're going to go to school. There are barely any schools, kindergarten spots as it is. Um, and without, uh, like, you know, an increase in resources, it seems like it would be near impossible. So, um, I know you've heard from a lot of people and I don't wanna take up too much of your time, but I would really implore you to consider, um, you know, a building of a smaller size. I think the plan is, the building is beautiful and the plan is beautiful, it'd be nice to have a grocery store, but it simply, um, doesn't need to be this tall, something in more of a mid-side range. You know, I think twelve stories would be great, but, you know, definitely less than twenty, um, would be something that my neighbors and I think would be much more on board with. Thank you very much.
Thanks, and I don't see any questions for you, so we're gonna move to the next speaker. Number forty-six is Maureen Sheron.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can, uh, up to five minutes please.
Oh gosh, I, uh, I'm opposed and some of the speakers tonight have been absolutely eloquent in that. Um, I can't say enough about how this is the cart before the horse and we're talking like maybe six weeks before the Broadway Plan comes back to council for approval? How could we even be considering this now? And, I'm not a person that casts suspicion on, on staff working at the city or at the park board. But what in heaven's name is going on? And this is all doing so much to erode the trust and the faith that people have within the city to be working and developing things for the better good of people. Um, you know, kind of, who's the person that found in the dumpster the plans for a thirty-nine-story building? Oh, at the time that this developer was asking for five? You begin to wonder, um, I, I, and I know we desperately need housing, but I'm gonna bring up the point that keeps being made again and again and again. And by the way, the empty homes tax does actually help. We have one in four housing units that we've built in the last, what, is it seven to eight years? That have been bought by investors. We are not building the right type of housing. And by the way, I'm not just speaking about overseas investors. We have people who own houses in Vancouver who are buying second homes. There's something wrong with this picture. Um, but you know, something that, that is, it's just taken me actually till tonight to realize this. We have all these grand plans, like the Broadway Plan, but are we just aspirational? Are we just hoping that somehow God will kinda come down and there'll be parks and schools and daycares? Nowhere in our plans are there any concrete ways as to how the city is actually going to make these things happen. I, 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 I'm just stunned now when I see that, oh, good, we're gonna allow all this density, but we have no idea how we're going to bring about these things that are so important. And, um, and I'm, I must admit that I'm stunned tonight to know that they're not paying any community amenity contributions. I, like huh? Like really? Why not? I, 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 I missed the presentation, so I don't know what the rationale for that is. And, um, in response to that article, um, that Dan Fumano had, um, and, and the comments by Sean Nardi in another article, um, the average rent in the area is fifteen hundred dollars for a unit and yet the market is at twenty-two hundred. So I just played inflation forward at five years and five years to build new places. And by the time we get out five years with that increase, the new units that we're building for affordable housing at twenty percent of that value will be two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars or a fifty percent increase. Who in the hell is gonna be able to afford that? So, I just, I, it, 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 it just floors me and, and I can't understand any families that would want to live in there because how are they gonna get their kids to school? With their busy lives, they're gonna be driving them to school, which is, I kinda think against what we, the reason why we're building on top of a subway station. But the subway station doesn't go to Lord Tennyson, which is the closest school that I can think of. So, um, you know, kind of, it wouldn't be worthwhile to do that. So I, I'm just opposed on so many levels, I, huh, and that's all. Some other people have said it much more eloquently than I did tonight.
Thanks so much. Uh, I don't see any questions for you, so I will move to the next speaker. Thanks again for calling in. Speaker number forty-seven is Will Cleveland.
Yes, hello, do you hear me?
Sure can.
Great, thank you. Uh, yes, my name is Will Cleveland, uh, thank you Mayor and Council, uh, for the chance to offer comment and I am calling because I'm in favor of the proposed project. Um, we need more housing, as many people have noted. And if everyone, uh, stands up and fights against every project that would actually deliver housing, we're not gonna get more housing. Um, the, uh, I'll be brief, but I will, I'll note I'm a West End resident and, uh, live here with my family. Uh, close to us, some new, uh, you know, higher-end rental buildings went in on a old commercial site like the, talking about the Safeway site on Davy Street. And, uh, you know, they're, they're high-end apartments, we actually can't afford to live there. It doesn't bother me at all because part of how this all works is the people who can live in the high-income apartments, they're gonna find housing. So, you know, you can build a hundred eighty, like, higher-end apartments here and it'll soak up that demand. Or we can not do it, all those people will still get housed and it's all just a game of musical chairs. They're all gonna get chairs one way or the other and someone gets left off the end. So to the extent that you can do a project like this, put in market rate housing that's gonna go to people with higher incomes and also get, you know, twenty percent affordable units, I think that's great, I think that's a win. To me, that's a no brainer. Uh, that's all I got, thank you.
Thanks a lot, I appreciate you calling in this evening. I don't see questions for you, so I will move on to the next speaker. Uh, is Gail Gavin, speaker number forty-eight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council. I, I oppose this development. I, um...
Point of privilege, Mayor, I'm having trouble hearing the speaker.
Sure, uh, speaker, if you could speak a little closer into your, uh, handset, that would be great.
How is this?
Uh, much better, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for letting me know. Um, so my clock start now or?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, I'm, I'm not in favor of this development and one of the main reasons is the, is the question of process. The Broadway Plan, as I have learned, is going to be considered within a few weeks. Um, and yet this proposal sets, uh, huge precedent for the whole of the Broadway corridor. You know, we residents have such a little bit of input into what happens and in our city. Reports come out all the time from city staff and council seems to just automatically refer them to public hearing and, and seems to me, most of them seem to pass, but, uh, I might be wrong about that. I'm, um... What is wrong with this, with, with this particular project? It's being stated by many people, the height, housing for whom, um, what is gonna be the quality of living in that area? Uh, just generally, we don't have a plan come out, but we've heard and we always know there's questions about, uh, schools. We don't have enough parks, we don't have enough parks that are recommended, um, for, you know, per, per person of population. We don't have daycares. And most egregiously, this developer is attempting to sidestep three-point-three million in fees and will not make any financial community amen, amended amenities. So, um... That, that's a problem as well in an area that has such a dearth of such facilities. The other thing that people have met and that I think is very incor, uh, very, very important is the view corridor. There is a beautiful view still coming down Granville Street and a few other cities that come off the, that particular ridge that runs through our city. And, um, and these are being, uh, this is going to be seriously, seriously, um, marred by a building right here at Granville Street. Uh, you know, I couldn't think of a worse place to put something of, of such a, a view blocker than right at Granville 'cause I've lived in this city all my life and I know you come down and there you see it. See the mountains, not so much anymore because of what's happened in the West End, but you can still see them. And this is gonna be directly in the way and we don't know what other buildings are gonna become, you know, be put up along the Broadway Corridor. But the fact of the matter is that that's something that should be left to a consideration of the Broadway Corridor Plan. Affordability, um, a gentleman phoned in and he says there are people living outside of Cana, uh, of Vancouver who, um, who would like to live here. Well, for many people in Vancouver, uh, they're not going to be living in these apartments, but if you live in Burnaby and you have the money to pay the rents that will be, even the affordable rents of what was gonna be, what, twenty-one hundred, Mr. Mayor, is that for, um, a one-bedroom or is that a, I think it's a one-bedroom? There's not many people, uh, who can afford that and families, I can only imagine what, what, I don't even know if there's a family units included in these about two-hundred or about forty-four units that are gonna be quote affordable. So the Broadway Tunnel, uh, uh, or the Broadway Tunnel itself is, in my view, an environmental and economic disaster. Uh, but it's designed to densify the Broadway Ridge View to connect out to the density that's being developed, um, essentially by developers on the board of, uh, the U, of UBC. Um, but, but just to look, just to take that into consideration in this particular project, uh, they want two-hundred-and-fifty-three parking spots. So after we, um, essentially dump greenhouse gases, uh, in the next few years building this tunnel that represent forty-five years of what they hope they might offset, uh, by the tunnel being in effect, uh, it's not really, you know, where's this transportation concept? We got a three-point-twenty-eight billion tunnel in one of the smallest, you know, populations, where we have six-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand people.
Thank you, you are, you're five minutes, so I just wanted to say, thank you so much for participating this evening and I'm going to move to the next speaker. Um, thanks again for calling in. Uh, the next speaker, I'm gonna call, the name said, uh, is, uh, forty-nine Ezra Semak.
Speaker forty-nine is not on the line.
Thank you, uh, speaker fifty Elizabeth Murphy.
No, not on the line.
Thank you, uh, speaker fifty-one Erica Weiss.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, Council, thank you for, uh, taking the time to listen to me speak, uh, this evening. Um, I am opposed to the rezoning application. Um, I am opposed to the rezoning application. Folks, we're standing on the precipice of an unmitigated climate disaster, and frankly, it strikes me as incredibly reckless that Council would even consider approving this proposed rezoning, given the tremendous embodied carbon cost of all the concrete and steel it would entail. Council's approval of this rezoning application would be even more horrifying, given that the entire corridor of West Broadway has already been earmarked for unprecedented development as part of your Broadway Plan. I'm so dismayed by the city's contribution to climate change by enabling carbon-intensive high-rise developments like this one, and the precedential effect of this development if the rezoning is approved. So I guess I'm just curious, on a macro level, when are you going to stop pretending that vast swaths of the province are burning for several months of the year? When are you going to stop pretending that we are not choked with smoke from forest fires across B.C. and the entire North American West every summer? At what point are you going to stop pretending that residents of Vancouver are not literally dying due to climate change-induced heat waves? When will Council acknowledge its contributions to and its complicity in climate change by embracing endless unsustainable growth and development, including through spot rezoning to permit development of high-rises like this one? You're not fooling anyone by pretending to lean green, green policy initiatives while simultaneously approving rezoning applications that will enable unsustainable development across the entire city at an unprecedented rate. It's so heartbreaking to see how many flagrantly empty homes there remain in neighborhoods like Kids and Point Gray in spite of the empty home tax. The city should be trying to meaningfully address that and aggressively enforce restrictions on short-term rentals, rather than using the lack of housing as a pretext to facilitate a retrograde model of endless growth and development. I frankly would not expect less from the majority of Council, given it has cultivated something of a history of disregard in community feedback and sustainable development, but because of the environmental cost and precedent it sets with respect to future unsustainable development across the city, I will be appalled if members of the Green Party vote in favor of this rezoning. As a resident of Vancouver and a voter in municipal elections, I ask that you oppose this rezoning application. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Council Hardwick.
Thank you, Erica. You, you started your remarks talking about climate change and kept that really as a through line in your commentary. Knowing that this is such a priority, to what do you attribute, um, this growth-promotion driver? I mean, this, this project, um, is really illustrative of this growth-promotion agenda in excess of pace of change and a sustainable model. This is obviously something you've thought about. Erica?
I, I think, I, 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 I'm just, uh, I'm just thinking of what to say. Um, I, I think it's money, you know? I think we need to start thinking about, you know, where, who, who is profiting from the, um, facilitation of this type of development and the type of development envisaged by the, by the Broadway Plan. Um, a, 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 and I think it's time, given where we are in terms of this climate crisis, which is not a new thing, I mean, this has been going on for decades now, um, to really start asking the hard questions of how much growth and why this city should be encouraging so much growth in the face of the, this climate reality that we're living in, you know? And at what point are you going to recognize that that is not in the best interest of us and our livability and the planet? Like, it just seems so, frankly speaking, just so dumb and myopic and retrograde and short-sighted, and I think you should be thinking about how to enhance livability for the city of Vancouver for everyone who lives here. And there are other ways that you can increase, um, available housing stock that I do not think have been fully explored, and I don't think that building high-rise towers like this, higgly-piggly for, they're not, you know, even going to be affordable for the vast majority of people. I, I don't see how that, um, helps anything other than, um, detract from the livability of the city and overall enjoyment of people who live here.
Well, we know that, um, growth is inevitable, and we've demonstrated that we've been growing at a steady-state rate. What I'm getting at is trying to understand why we're promoting growth in excess of that pace of change in what I think you've demonstrated is an unsustainable model. Would you agree?
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I don't have the answer to that question. I would be very intrigued to know what it is, because any plan that provides for development at a rate which exceeds natural population growth is just, it's reckless, it's appalling.
Well, it's challenging. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Hardwick.
Okay, thanks. There are no question, more questions for you, so we're going to move on to the next speaker, uh, fifty-two Andrew Shields.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes, please.
Great, thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I wanted to call in to express my support for the proposal being discussed tonight. Um, so my name's Andrew, I was born and raised in Vancouver, and now I'm attending UBC with about a year of schooling to go. And as you're all aware, um, for young people like myself, despite being born and raised here, it's becoming increasingly difficult to find accommodations in the inner city. Um, because of this, we're being pushed further and further away, um, further away from the downtown core, and it's hard to imagine that I might not have the option when I'm older of living in the city and having the accessibility of being near my parents. Um, as someone who utilizes public transit, I like that the proposed development's right on the future Broadway subway. Um, I can see myself living somewhere like this and commuting to both UBC and to work, and take advantage of all the other proposed amenities. Uh, I think this project would be an asset to the community and a success for the Council. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any questions for you, so I will move to the next speaker. Thanks. We have speaker number fifty-three, Kia Gaffer.
Uh, hello, Mayor and Council, am I, uh, coming through clear?
You sure are. Uh, go ahead, up to five minutes, please.
Good evening. Uh, yeah, my name is Kia, been, uh, living in Vancouver, uh, I was twelve, I came to this country. Uh, progressively, uh, cost of living has been, uh, making it increasingly difficult to live in this town, and I plan on continuing living here, make a pretty lengthy commute, get to the job that, uh, you know, pays, uh, below what it should already, and, uh, finding housing, uh, is just a ridiculous challenge for a lot of people in my generation. Um, and it seems as if every time we have the option to develop or rezone, uh, for the purpose of density, uh, we have this, uh, block of people who are contemplating things like views and aesthetics, and that, that must be really nice, but unfortunately, a grocery store conveniently close to my place is something that I'm trying to, um, really get going, and, uh, it would be nice to have a place that doesn't bankrupt me every month, um, nor to live in. Um, again, so, uh, building more dense rental developments is like something that every city should just kind of accept that needs to happen, like regardless of what we might have to compromise in this situation. Um, I think I heard someone talking about Paris and Barcelona earlier, those places aren't exactly doing great with that, you could put it, they're like vastly historical places, not like, you know, to have their own block of people protecting that part. Um, you know, this being on top of a Skytrain station, like, that's, that's huge, so many people, like, trying to avoid using gas-intensive cars for this, for their commute, like, that's another cost sorted, and a grocery store on top of that? I don't know, uh, from what I've seen, there's a bit of a disconnect between the people who are, uh, who are, who are being heard possibly here, and I'm just, I'm just here to let you guys know, I'm in favor of this, and I think a lot of people in my, uh, age group, uh, are as well, so, uh, that's it, uh, that's all I got to say. Thank you very much for listening.
Thanks so much. I don't see any questions for you, so we'll move to the next speaker. He is, uh, Jane Frost, number fifty-four.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, can you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes, please.
Great, thank you. My name is Jane Frost, and I live in Fairview. I oppose the CD-1 rezoning, fourteen-seventy-seven West Broadway. Before I get into my remarks, which are going to focus on affordability, I'd just like to make a, a comment about schools in the vicinity of fourteen-seventy-seven. Three years ago, my granddaughter's parents put her name on a list for entry into kindergarten at the Kobe League. She was ninety-two on the waitlist, and here it is, three years later, and the waitlist is even longer. So, to affordability, many of the people who have spoken tonight and who support fourteen-seventy-seven do so because they want more affordable housing. I want more affordable housing too. However, we need to be realistic and set the record straight. As we've seen happen in Vancouver over the past fifteen years, massive upzonings like fourteen-seventy-seven have actually decreased affordability because they create land inflation and a gentrification ripple effect. The proposed upzoning will cause the subject property to increase in value. Since V.C. assessment uses best use to assess land values, it will look to fourteen-seventy-seven as an example of the best use for surrounding properties. This will cause the older buildings a few blocks away to increase value, appreciate at an accelerated rate, and cause their property taxes to go up. When the property taxes of these buildings go up, first, rents go up, and second, landowners start to think about selling or rezoning their older buildings. When this happens, renters are evicted, and based on statistics, when older, affordable buildings are replaced by large concrete towers, the new homes are usually smaller, rent for the same or more money, and people usually don't return because of the upheaval. This is already happening in real time. Two-three-three-one Granville Street, located kitty-corner to fourteen-seventy-seven West Broadway at Aitken Granville, was listed for twenty-one million in July of twenty-twenty-one. At the end of July, Council allows staff to consider the rezoning at fourteen-seventy-seven. A month later, PCI Construction announced that it wished to build this thirty-nine-story building, and a few weeks after this, two-three-three-one Granville delisted and relisted for thirty million dollars. That's a forty-three percent increase and almost double the assessed value. This is property inflation happening before our very eyes, even before this rezoning is approved by Council. That nine-million inflation will decrease the affordability of future homes at two-three-three-one Granville if you approve this rezoning. If we want to build affordable, sustainable housing and do it quickly, then the city, city should build within the existing zoning to control inflation, and only when that is exhausted, make incremental tweaks to that zoning. Use Council's rental-only zoning powers. Give incentives to developers to build affordable rentals by expediting processing and reducing fees, costs, and requirements. Provide incentives for wood-framed low- and mid-rise construction, and control city spending so that you are not exacerbating the vicious cycle. Massive upzonings like fourteen-seventy-seven contribute to land inflation and gentrification. This application will lead to increased taxes, higher rents, and encourage demo evictions in the neighborhood, decreasing affordability. Based on this, I ask you to please reject this rezoning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, you do have questions from Council Hardwick.
Thank you very much, Jane, and, uh, certainly do, um, agree with your, uh, analysis around land inflation. You urged Council to reject this application. What would you do instead?
Well, just to quote a previous speaker partially, I would take the blueprint, I wouldn't put it in the dumpster, but I would take it back to the drawing boards, um, based on the comments that I've heard tonight about what is realistic for the Broadway Corridor, and it's not thirty-nine stories. It's not healthy, it's not pleasant, it's, it's, it's not a good idea.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that is it for questions. Thank you so much for calling in tonight. Um, just checking here with the Clerk's Council. Just one second. Um, okay, uh, we're going to go to speaker number fifty-five, uh, Frank Heinzelmann.
Hello, yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Uh, dear Mayor and Council, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this, uh, proposed development at fourteen-seventy-seven West Broadway. I am opposed to this rezoning, uh, that would permit a forty-odd-story building there, and I give you the, uh, a few reasons for that. First of all, let us decide upon the Broadway Plan before City Council embarks on spot zoning this particular building site, one step at a time and first steps first. So first, please have a plan for the overall area before you get into spot rezoning particular, particular building sites. Second point is, towers such as the one proposed are the most carbon-intensive to build and energy inefficient to operate over their lifecycle. Forget about the slogan, "Vancouver, the Greenest City," if you start building towers like this everywhere. Where's your concern about the climate emergency? You seem to completely disregard that. Third point, rezoning this tower and all the other towers that might be permitted if the Broadway Plan is approved will result in some so-called affordable units that are not family-friendly and lots of units for well-off people. I favor gradual mid-rise, mid- or low-rise densification that has a much higher chance of being family-friendly and truly affordable, especially if the construction costs are lower by using mass timber construction. Fourth point, I am opposed to this sprawl of downtown onto the west side. I don't want our city to become a vast concrete canyon. I'm opposed to the vision for Vancouver where we all have to live in and amidst these gigantic towers. I do not share the vision of towers everywhere. Why would anyone want to live in these high-rise towers in the first place? And please be aware, there are alternatives. I'm, of course, in favor of densification, I understand that we have to do that, but not by building these high-rise towers everywhere. There are alternatives. Permitting rezoning this site, uh, would start your vision of towers everywhere. I oppose that vision. In the interest of people who live in and love this city, please vote no to this proposed rezoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see, uh, any questions for you. Um, and before we move to the next speaker, Council, I have a request from clerks, there is an anonymous caller on the line, and we're just going to take, uh, two minutes, uh, to sort that out, so why don't you just stretch, and we'll come back at nine-thirty? Just two minutes to break for clerks to sort this out. For fifty-six, James Murray on the line. James Murray, speaker number fifty-six.
Mayor Stewart, speaker number fifty-six is not on the line.
Okay, thanks very much. We'll move to speaker number fifty-seven, Chris Milne.
No, not on the line.
Thank you. We'll go to fifty-eight, Mark Battersby.
Hi, I'm, I am on the line.
Okay, great. Up to five minutes. Thanks for calling in.
I want to speak to sort of a general concept here, which I think gets lost in all this talk about densification, which is, we're not, the issue is not storing people in houses somewhere. It's creating a livable environment for, for everyone. And the doctor who brought up the issue of health and wellbeing, I thought was really nailed something. The issue of livability and, and the infrastructure for livability should be the first question. So for example, this particular development that's proposed is apparently not going to pay even the minimal amount required to maintain the same level of community and infrastructure support. People have noted that the schools are not adequate for this development, but what about community centers? What about parks? Fairview has a park deficit. There's no parks there. Is the city going to provide the parks? No, it's not getting funded from the development levies or the community amenities, community centers. All these things, and I can't resist, of course, Vancouver beaches. All these things are what makes Vancouver the desirable, wonderful place to live, but it requires that the increasing densification be supported by appropriate infrastructure. And that is not inexpensive, but it's required, and developers can't dodge these obligations and essentially impose them on, on the community. Secondly, I want to speak to this issue of democratic deficit. I have to say, I'm sure council and mayor, I'm sure you too, you have to be impressed by the quality of participation in these events. If these people were involved at the beginning of the process rather than now at the end, you would have had a much more sensible development. You would have had a much more amiable situation. And I cite as an example, one that I know very well, and some of the councillors do also, the Arbutus Walk, which community it was involved in from the very beginning, way before any development proposals were put forward. And we have probably one of the most livable, somewhat densified areas in Vancouver. So I suggest in the long run, and maybe the Broadway plan is an opportunity, that they involve communities not at the end of the proposal, but right at the very beginning in the development of these processes. You have so much informed and sensible and wellbeing, well-informed people out there to tap into. Let's, let's renew democracy in Vancouver while we're also densifying. Those are my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any questions for you, so we are gonna move to the next speaker. Just a reminder, for those of you who may have missed your turn at the end of the council meeting, I guess it'll be on Thursday, I will call three times for anybody that would like to speak to this item, and that information will be circulated for the public to see. We have speaker number fifty-nine, Ashken Ranavarti.
Hello, Mayor and council, can you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes, please.
Perfect. My name is Ashcon and I live in Vancouver, BC. I've grown up in Metro Vancouver my entire life and I'm currently attending BCIT as a full-time student. And I'm also currently a renter in Vancouver. I've taken time outside of my studies tonight to show my strong support for this project and encourage you to vote in favour. I have an exam tomorrow morning at eight-thirty AM, so I'll keep my comments brief. You have heard from so many speakers today calling in support of this rezoning, and I am one of them. This project can truly impact the lives of many people by providing housing. We should not think of this in terms of units, but housing as homes for our city's residents. You're well aware that for young people like myself, despite having been born and raised in Vancouver, we're being pushed farther and farther out of the city. It's become hard to imagine that I'll have the option of living close to home, near my parents. In regards to limiting the height, as a speaker mentioned, it would prevent home attainment for people like myself. I strongly disagree that we should limit this development to ten or even twenty stories. We need mass density above rapid transit to usher in a green living practice that also provides much-needed secure rentals, rental units. Our city council can take action today and show their commitment to addressing the housing crisis and standing up for renters like me and roughly fifty-five percent of Vancouverites who rent by voting support of this proposal. This can be a standout housing action by council, and I urge you to vote in favour. Thank you for your time and listening tonight.
Thank you. I don't see any questions for you, so we'll move to speaker number sixty. Freya Searless.
Speaker sixty has withdrawn.
Thank you, clerks. Sixty-one, speaker sixty-one, Marlene W.
Hello.
Hi there, can we have your full name? Yes, we can. Do we have your?
Marlene Wickman.
Wickman, thank you very much.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, oh, sorry. Let's skip ahead. Good evening, Mayor and councillors. I'm, I'm Marlene from Vancouver, and I oppose this project. I'm inspired by the work of the Fairview South Granville Action Committee and Kitsellana Coalition. Fourteen seventy seven West Broadway is a precedent-setting thirty-nine-story building proposed ahead of the Broadway plan. Construction has already started, and there is an application for rezoning. This is a bold proposition. This hearing is a pressure tactic to get the density approved due to the subway station construction deadline, although the building plan has been in works since at least twenty nineteen. It is highly probable that a foundation for a thirty-nine-story building has already been made, and a prompt approval is expected, since it is unusual for council to refuse a building proposal. This project brings up a number of ethical and quality of life-altering issues that require consideration ahead of the Broadway plan. Mayor Stewart has said that Vancouver needs a bold plan to deal with the housing crisis. Fourteen seventy seven West Broadway makes an excellent case study for setting and enforcing expectations for buildings of such great height and density. So Mayor and councillors, be bold and make your requests now. The COV staff report included these phrases: vibrant, eclectic, and walkable mixed-use area, hubs around-the-clock vitality, important urban placemaker for this area, visible for many significant public places on the downtown peninsula, for-profit affordable rental housing does not necessarily create rental units that are affordable to all Vancouver residents. My responses to these comments are, one, appearance. The building is distinctive for the moment due to its height, but that's all. It isn't an urban-designed placemaker. There is nothing romantic or fantastic here. There's not much to view from downtown. It doesn't create excitement for the twenty-thirty Winter Olympic Games bid. If the Broadway plan wants Broadway to become a great street, there should be great-looking buildings. Maybe that's why this building is being promoted ahead of the Broadway plan. Two, function. A subway station is not a place for round-the-clock vitality. It needs to have a protective and stable population to dissuade criminal activity. So, no bars, no convenience stores. This has been well-researched internationally by environmental criminologists, and in particular by Patricia and Paul Brantingham at SFU. It would be better to have extended hour essential services with security like an urgent care centre or community centre at ground level to provide a protected, stable population near the subway station. This should be implemented into zoning around subway stations. Three, if COV wants complete communities, high-rise buildings need to function like complete communities and provide equity to families. Families need the subway to go to work and take children to school. The so-called minimum of thirty-five percent rental units of two or more bedrooms results in nineteen three-bedroom units, or eight-point-five percent of the total rental capacity. Vancouver does not have a one-child-per-family policy. Big developers can offer better and more appropriate housing to Vancouver families. With complete communities, you need to rethink social spaces inside of high-rises for these families. Since residents in this building don't have backyards or courtyards, they don't have safe, convenient social spaces to spontaneously interact, especially with children. High-rise buildings need social amenity spaces every few floors for families, and this should be part of zoning. Consideration should be made for independent schools inside of high-rises because it takes a province a long time to create public schools. You need to value small green spaces like parks, since the Broadway plan does not consider them at all for its public space shading policy. There is no policy at all for private property. More people are in parks when it's sunny. Plants need sun to grow. The World Health Organization says green space is essential for the mental health of urban residents. The Doctors of BC recently approved a policy resolution to increase equitable and safe access to green spaces. So to protect green spaces, there needs to be a change in how high-rises are distributed instead of two on every block. There needs to be planned light corridors on each floor of high-rises to allow light to pass through the building. This would create a new design condition for zoning. So Mayor and councillors, think about your constituents first, what they need for a good quality of life, how neighbourhoods can be developed for safety and social cohesion, and set the bar high. For this development, the motivation and compliance level would be high. Be bold and reject it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't see any que- Yeah, thanks. I don't see any questions for you, so we're gonna move on to, oh, councillor Hardwick. Up to five minutes.
Sorry, I thought I was on there. That was an interesting take.
Well, I have to offer something new.
Well, your parting remarks to us were to reject. But something's gotta happen on this site, so what would you do?
Okay, all right. Well, okay, I'm not a fan of thirty-nine stories. I don't really have a concept of looking at, at that personally, but aside from the height, if you're actually wanting this to be kind of a flagship station where the highest buildings are going to be, it should be spectacular-looking. And my personal thought about, you know, the design of Vancouver and especially Broadway, it should have some Indigenous creations theme, like the origins of Vancouver. And I don't know how, how this got missed with the other, like, First Nations, like, development projects, is that there is a water serpent theme in all of the, the three Vancouver First Nations. The Squamish have, I think it's like a two-headed water serpent that, you know, fertilized the soil and kind of, you know, created the land they could live on. I think the Slawatuz also have a serpent, the Squamish, they actually have a serpent slayer. So I think this is actually kind of a good, you know, theme to put through here. I don't know, okay, I can't design like this tower, but I think that there should be some, you know, indigenous kind of, you know, shape or motif incorporated. And I actually think a lot of public art should be incorporated into the building design itself as opposed to having some object just stuck someplace, like that can be in thirty-third. There's some, like, bowling pins or something weird going on there. So I would rather have like a better design thought. And, you know, you actually have to think, like, if you're gonna have, like, a building of height, that it actually is like a miniature neighbourhood by itself, and that you actually have to facilitate people to actually have a neighbourhood in there because you don't have a normal kind of geography in that situation. And I think when you're planning these things, you do have to, like, zone that you have the right amenities around it, okay? Like, other people have been talking about amenities being stripped or not having infrastructure. You actually have to plan your needs, like, reading, like, with Broadway and Vancouver Plan, they talk about complete communities. Well, you actually have to think about how you're gonna make that complete for people. A lot of people have talked about, where are my kids gonna go to school? Yeah, that is a valid question. You know, people talked about, oh, Henry Hudson. Well, they, I don't know, what, did they downsize by like eighty spots and they dropped the French immersion? Like, you know, you, you know, you have to, like, put everything together. And what I see missing a lot in city of Vancouver policy, you've got all these different departments. Nobody talks to each other. So I don't know-
Okay, we're getting a little bit off the track. Sorry to interrupt you. I was trying to actually stay with, with this particular development, although I enjoy it. So, the question was, what would you do? What I got from it was flagship with an Indigenous theme.
Yes.
And that high-rises should be-
A neighbourhood by itself, okay? Because it's like, you know, certainly it's big enough, like, and like certainly big developers have the dollars. Instead of looking at homeowners jacking their taxes all the time for everything, okay? You know, the big developers have the dollars. They could do more, especially since you've already said they've had this property since two thousand and seven when it's worth half the price. You know, they, they could provide more, okay? And I think you should actually squeeze them for more. They want a deadline. They want to build this all up while the subway is being doing, you know, while it's being constructed. So, you know, you, you, you've got them where it hurts, so go ahead and get something.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, council, we're coming to the end of tonight with just about thirteen minutes left. We do have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven speakers on the list. And then once we do the call, there may be many, many more. Just wanted to point that out. If people have points of procedure, I'm happy to hear those orally.
Mayor Stewart, my name is on the queue to speak.
Okay.
I'm, I'm wondering if now would be an appropriate time to move a motion to extend past ten PM to hear from the remaining speakers and close the speakers' list and refer debate and decision to the next unfinished business on the next council meeting date. Though I'm certainly open to hearing from the clerks. I know many of our schedules are packed. So if there's a best time to refer, open to that.
Okay, so we have a motion then to extend to hear the remainder of the speakers this evening, and then refer debate and decision to a future date, which will be named by the clerk. Do we have a second for that motion?
I have a point of information, Mayor, prior to that.
Yep, not really points of information time. We have to have a motion on the floor for you to have the floor and to ask it. So I'm just gonna ask if there's a second for this motion. I don't have a second. So does anybody else have a motion they'd like to move?
I'm, I'm on the queue, Mayor.
Yeah, we're, we're, really, there's no opportunity for me to give you the floor at this point, but if you have a point of procedure.
Mayor, just give councillor Boyle the floor.
Has she moved a motion? So if you wanna move a motion, you can go ahead.
Well, I, well, I'm gonna move a motion to seek information from the clerks about the council public hearing reserve scheduled for tomorrow from three to five.
Said it's not a motion, but a point of procedure.
Motion for information.
Yeah, there's no motions for imp- Yeah, there's no motions for information, so you have a point of procedure, which is, what are you asking?
Well, no, it's not a point of procedure. It's actually a point of information. I'm seeking clarification as to whether there is a public hearing reserve in our calendars from three to five tomorrow because it's hard to handle councillor Boyle's motion without knowing that.
Yeah, there is, perhaps the clerks could clarify what, as a point of procedure, what the council reserves are, upcoming council reserves.
The reserve that was scheduled for tomorrow from three to five has been, is no longer in the calendar. It's been canceled. The next reserve is April twenty-first, Thursday, April twenty-first, from six to ten p.m.
The next council meeting is the twenty-sixth, and so debate and decision could be moved to unfinished business on that council meeting if we complete our speakers.
I'm happy to entertain that motion now that we have clarification on the dates.
So you're moving a motion to?
To hear the remaining speakers this evening and then refer debate and decision to the council meeting of April twenty-sixth.
Okay.
You know, second that councillor Boyle.
Okay, now we have a lot--
Information.
One second here. We, I'm going to move us to the main queue.
But Mayor, I was on the queue after councillor Dominado for a point of procedure.
Yes, you can come back to that, but actually, no, point of procedures, you can ask orally if you like, but we're now on the main queue. We can debate whether or not we're going to extend. Councillor Kirby Young, you have up to five minutes.
I have a point of procedure and I was just wondering if the clerk could advise why tomorrow's reserve was canceled in the afternoon?
Yeah, that is a point of information from the floor. Go ahead, clerks, do you have an explanation as to why it was canceled? This was never slated for that time.
Okay.
It, from my understanding, it was if the council or the standing committee had carried over.
But we do have, following up on that if I might, we do have a reserve date for Thursday evening at six o'clock, correct? Do we not?
Thursday, yes, and that was specifically for this item.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else want to debate this one?
I would like to suggest that there are too many speakers and I think it's a better--
On the queue councillor Hartwick, there you go, up to five minutes.
I thought I was there, but yeah, I think we're coming up on ten o'clock and this is supposed to be an off-council week. I appreciate that, but there is, this is an important item. There are more speakers than I think we can get through properly this evening. We have a reserve on Thursday starting at six. We can complete the speakers and have debate and decision then without killing ourselves tonight.
Okay, thanks so much. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so we do have division, so I will call for a recorded vote on this one and all we need is fifty percent to pass it. So if folks want to use their voting screens, I'll ask the clerks to trigger the vote, please.
So Mayor, point of clarification we are voting on, could you just repeat the?
Yes, the motion we are voting on is to extend past ten o'clock to hear the remainder of the speakers and then moving debate and decision to, if we complete them all tonight, debate and decision would be moved to the council meeting on the twenty-sixth as unfinished business. If we don't finish them all tonight, I guess we would be, we would continue to hear them on Thursday.
Okay, if this motion passes and a councillor cannot continue tonight and then hear the speakers, then they will be precluded from voting, is that?
No, they won't. They can review, they can review the tapes.
We barely have quorum.
If time allows, but if the councillor does not have time to review the tapes and misses speakers tonight, they cannot vote, is that correct?
Yep, and I will ask that when we get to it. The clerks just remind me, we need two-thirds to extend. So I've called the vote. Clerks, can you trigger the vote on this item? Thank you. Councillor Dejanova. Councillor Dejanova. Clerks, is councillor Dejanova on the call?
No, we're just marking her as absent.
Okay, I do think that has failed though. So we have failed to extend and because we only have five minutes left and we usually have questions for speakers, I think that's probably a good time to just recess now. And we will continue hearing from speakers on Thursday evening starting at six p.m. And I think, councillor, we should be prepared to, because we have that whole evening to make our decision on that, on that night. So if we can. Okay, great. So thanks so much. We are recess. Thanks very much to clerk, to the clerks and staff and everybody who participated this evening and we'll see you on Thursday at six p.m. Good night, everybody.